No, really. I think we're going to retire. (laughter)
Hi, honey, how are you?
Good, how are you? (inaudible) I don't know, I changed the displays and everything. I'm up. Yeah, you're up. I know, it's fine.
Anything else?
It's fine. I'm making sure it works, but I might need you to...
That's like the magic bag, I know what's in there.
That's it for you. I just want you to be prepared. Still just playing around with it. Wow. Oh, I gotta find a job.
Yep.
What are we looking for?
I love this negotiation mediation stuff. I don't know where to go with that. I'm changing displays, but it's showing in here, so weird. I really don't.
I'd like to call this meeting back to order, just to catch everybody up. We went into executive session, discussed collective bargaining at 5:30, and we suspended that meeting, and we're back in regular session. And I'd invite you to stand and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. The Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Good evening and welcome. This meeting's being televised by Chelmsford Telemedia. Is there anyone present who is planning to record? Okay. So we just go right?
We just need to take a motion to take that out of...
Yeah.
Item out of order.
I didn't say in a motion to take the first item on the agenda out of order.
The four.
I'm sorry, the fourth.
I was gonna say.
Yeah.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we take item number four out of the agenda and move it to number one.
Second.
Okay. Does the roll call?
Um, yes, if you're taking it out of order.
Okay, we'll have a roll call, vote on that, Dennis.
Aye.
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 Unanimous. Can I walk you through it? Yes, please.
Just to update, the public, the purpose of the executive session we just had was to review the terms of a memorandum of agreement that was recently tentatively agreed to between the school committee representatives and the Chelmsford Federation of Teachers, professional support staff representatives. So a copy of this MOA is in your folders. I'll just walk you through the terms that were agreed to by this negotiating subcommittee, which consisted of Dennis King and Barbara Scar. We met with the union about a week or so ago to try to reach agreement on a deal. We did end up agreeing to the terms, tentatively agreeing to the terms, for a one-year contract that bridges the 2016-17 school year, our current school year. So the terms as defined, I'm gonna just walk through for you. Basically, this is gonna memorialize a one-year contract that covers the current school year that is just concluding. All the existing language that is not altered by this MOA remains the same and in force. The, we had agreed to ground rules for a multi-year negotiation. Those ground rules are gonna remain in effect. We're gonna have one more bargaining session next week, which is actually the third bargaining session, which was specified for the final night of exchange proposals for a longer-term contract. So we're gonna stick to that date. The school committee will submit its final proposals, and then the union will submit any that they may have, and we'll begin immediately negotiating for years two, three, and outward. That's what the fourth article talks about. Number five specifies that for the current year that is just concluding, July 1, 2016 to June 30, 2017, the salary scales will be appended by adding a 2% cost of living increase to all steps and lanes of the salary scales, and that will be retroactive back to July 1, 2016. I'll be working with the business office and then the union in the coming days, assuming the union ratifies tomorrow this pact, to figure out retro and to get that scheduled for the staff. Point number six, we did agree that going forward, all bargaining unit employees would agree to direct deposit. We still have a number of staff in the district, not only in this unit, but in the district that don't have direct deposit, they still receive a paper paycheck advice, and we're really looking to move towards having everything be electronic and ultimately be able to just email out paycheck advices and not have to, and trying to get away from paper. So the group did agree to that. The numbers seven, eight, and nine actually just deal with floating holidays, and this came up a year or so ago because when holidays fall, and this happened with Christmas and New Year's last year on Saturdays, there was current language that talked about floating holidays where the employee would just kind of pick which day they would take off instead. And as a district, we really wanted to be able to just have all staff take a particular day off. So if Christmas fell on a Saturday, we would like to just be able to celebrate as a district the holiday on Friday, have the district be closed, everyone works four days that week but gets paid for five, and not have the day kind of float around the calendar. And so that was number seven, eight, and nine. Basically, we're all paragraphs that dealt with floating holidays that are now removed. And instead of having floating holidays, we're just gonna specify which day everyone is gonna get off. I think this year coming up, a lot of the holidays float to Sundays, so we'll probably end up taking the holiday on a Monday, so the district will be closed, everyone will get paid for the day, but again, it won't be floating. Number 10, we just specified that postings would be for a minimum of five working days. There were two different sections of the contract. One talked about postings for 10 days, another section talked about postings for five days, depending on what time of year jobs are posted, but we've agreed to have postings just be for five days across the board for all postings. And because in doing that in number 10, we're able to eliminate number 11, which was the alternating paragraph that talked about the discrepancy between five and 10-day postings. So those are the terms of the tentative agreement that were reached about a week or so ago. We're bringing that forward this evening for any questions the committee may have. Certainly, this memorandum of agreement was supported by the negotiating subcommittee, which was composed of Barbara and Dennis. It's my understanding that the union has scheduled a ratification vote for this agreement for tomorrow, so assuming that that, the school committee passes it this evening, and then the union passes it tomorrow, that will take care of the first year of the contract, and we'll immediately next week begin working on the successive years, the out years two and three. So happy to answer any questions, but obviously would recommend this for approval this evening with the committee, and Town Manager Cohen is here as well because he is a voting member of the negotiating team.
Do you want to have comments or questions regarding this? Seeing none, I'll entertain a motion to ratify.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to ratify the collective bargaining agreement between the Chelmsford School Committee and the Chelmsford Federation of Teachers, professional support personnel, July 1, 2016 to June 30, 2017, a one-year deal.
Second.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Any further discussion on the motion? All right, this is a financial matter, so it'll be a roll call. Dennis, would you start us, please?
Aye.
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 Unanimous. Thank you, Paul.
Thank you, Paul.
Thank you very much. Go back up to the top.
Yeah. All right, next item on the agenda is approval of the minutes of the regular school committee of June 6, 2017. I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we approve the minutes of the regular school committee dated June 6, 2017.
Second.
Any corrections or comments with regard to that meeting? Hearing none, we'll now vote. All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Any abstention or negative vote? Unanimous. Next item on the agenda is time for public comment. If you address the committee, please let us have your name and address for the record. Anyone like to address the committee at this time?
I appreciate the opportunity to speak this evening. My name is Dawn. I don't live here in town, but I've been a teacher here for 10 years. I'm also a...
Excuse me, could you just give us your address, please?
Due to the nature of the information I'm sharing about my family, I'd like to do that off-camera.
Okay.
Thank you. I'm also a mother deeply involved in the adoption process. I believe I can add a unique perspective to the ongoing debate regarding parental leave. I hope that sharing my thoughts will give a voice to non-traditional families in the district who would be impacted by the language of our new contract. So everyone knows, a mother who gives birth is offered the opportunity to use up to 40 days of her accrued sick time toward maternity leave under our current contract. My understanding is that this policy will continue. Back in the fall, it was brought to my attention that Chelmsford School leadership was suggesting that a parent who did not physically give birth would be given the opportunity to use up to 10 of his or her accrued sick days toward parental leave. My understanding is at this point, negotiations have brought this number up to 20. On November 10 of 2016, I sent a letter to Superintendent Lang expressing my concerns about this inequity. The following is an excerpt from that letter. Starting a family or expanding a family through the process of adoption is a beautiful and intense experience. Each story is unique, but there is no exception to this rule. There is loss, and therefore trauma, inherent in every adoption story. Every child who comes to be a part of a family through adoption needs support to overcome this trauma. And as a result of this trauma, a child's ability to form a healthy attachment to his or her new caregivers is a huge concern among adoptive families. Can I move this?
Yes.
Go ahead.
Thank you. This basic truth comes along with adoption, in addition to the other unique parts of a child's history, which may include but are not limited to abuse, neglect, abandonment, lack of adequate health care or attendance to the child's basic needs, lack of trust, illness, special needs, behavioral issues, language barriers. There are families who are trying to seamlessly integrate a child of a different race or religion into their own. There are families who are trying to create healthy relationships with a child's birth family, who may or may not have the same goal. And this is all in addition to the reality that there is a new child living in a new space with people who are essentially strangers. The reality that this child may not be adjusting to his or her new surroundings. May not be adjusting to the type of fabric softener you use because it doesn't smell like home, or that the child doesn't like blueberries, or that the child is afraid of the dark. And beyond all that, the new caregivers need to set up doctor's appointments, carry over any services that the child was receiving prior to placement, identify any necessary services that the child was not receiving prior to placement, attend and/or host meetings and visits with social workers, attorneys, and whoever else is part of the child's story, and arrange for childcare when the time comes to return to work. When the time comes to return to work, the caregivers are asking this child to trust again, a child who is hopefully beginning to show signs of adjustment to his or her new surroundings. We ask our children to trust again, as we drop them off at daycare or school, to trust these new adults who will care for them in our absence, to trust that we will return at the end of the day to pick them up and bring them home after a lifetime of being let down by adults. It breaks our hearts, but we do it because we need to work in order to support these families that we're trying so hard to build. I'm stating the most basic facts of an adoptive family's experience. My story is no exception. I love my child. I love our complicated story, but I won't share the details of it, sorry, because the Massachusetts Commission Against Discrimination has spoken up on my behalf. They have explicitly clarified that an employee on leave for the adoption of a child shall be entitled to the same benefits offered to an employee on leave for the birth of a child. Please don't argue that medical leave is purely medical. There is no way that we can quantify the benefits inherent in every maternity leave. Medical care is certainly a part of it, but to say that those 40 days of paid leave are not a benefit is simply untrue. And if we need to establish adoptive leave as a medical necessity, please refer to the paragraphs above that outline just a few of the emotional needs that are addressed in every single adoption story. The emotional well-being of a child who is transitioning into a new home should not and cannot be dismissed. I'm asking you, as a mom and a longtime employee of Chelmsford Public Schools, to send a strong message to adoptive and other non-traditional families through this negotiation process. We see you, we hear you, and we value you. At this time, I'd like to clarify one thing. On mass.gov, you can find the Massachusetts Commission Against Discrimination parental leave fact sheet. This is where I found the information that I put together to write the letter to Dr. Lang. But when I printed it this morning to bring here tonight, I noticed something that I didn't notice before. It says that the law provides that if two employees of the same employer give birth to or adopt the same child, the two employees are entitled to an aggregate of eight weeks of leave. So if it's an issue that two people who, two, a couple that works in Chelmsford would have a child, and they would be given two separate leaves, that's not actually the case under the MCAD guidelines. I'd like to leave you with one clear message this evening. Non-birth parents should be offered the same opportunity to use their accrued sick days toward parental leave as mothers who give birth. Offering 10 or 20 days to an adoptive parent, in contrast to birth mothers' 40 days, is inequitable, and by the standards of the Massachusetts Commission Against Discrimination, illegal. I am hopeful that the members of the negotiating teams will continue this dialogue and work together to create a new contract that is inclusive and supportive of all families. Please don't hesitate to contact me off-camera if you have any further questions, and I thank you so much for your time.
Thank you very much. Would anyone else like to address the committee at this time?
Hi, my name is Margaret Blakely, and I spend most of my time at 200 Richardson Road, like a lot of other people in this room. I'm gonna be very brief.
Could you just give us your address, please?
Oh, sure. That, in Chelmsford, that is my address.
She doesn't live in Chelmsford.
I live in...
Only if you live in town, you have to give your address.
Sorry. This will be very brief. It's actually with regards to the English coordinator. Steph Quinn has been working extremely hard to be the coordinator for both English and history this year, and I've been assisting her as program facilitator, but I just noticed due to scheduling conflicts that we weren't able this spring to present our updates as the other departments were. I'm sure it's through no one's fault, it's just because everyone is so busy, but I was wondering if because there are so many great things, even despite not having a coordinator that's been going on in the English department this year, if maybe early next fall when the committee reconvenes, we could give our presentation then, because I would really like to be able to speak publicly about some of the great things that the department has been working so hard on. So, that's it.
Good. Thank you very much for bringing that to our attention. Anyone else like to address the committee? Do we have good news? Oh, I'm sorry.
Oh, sorry.
That's okay, just looked the other way.
No one's ever thought I'd move fast, so thank you. Catherine Sullivan, Chelmsford High School, 200 Richardson Road, but also Seven Robinwood, it's one word, Road in Littleton, 01460. You'll never find it, so that's why I gave the full address. Good luck. I'm here to congratulate the committee on settling this contract for the Paris, the support staff. I greatly appreciate that. I really couldn't do our jobs at the high school, I can only speak at that level because that's where I teach, without them, and I'm hoping that this sends good vibes to Thursday night because I would like our contract settled as well. And maybe you don't think you can, then give us a one-year contract. I would love, you brought up money the other time we were together, and we say it's really not about the money, but I'd love my retroactive pay because I deserve it. And on another note, we're not getting paid again, as everyone knows in the room, till September 15th. That is a long time, though I did plan for it this time, okay? But it's still a long time. Now, when I count out September 8th is really the time we should be getting the paycheck, and we're not. It's funny how that happens. It's illegal to pay us too early, but it always seems to work out where we still have to go another week without the paycheck. So that retroactive would really come in handy for my September mortgage, and I'm sure for other people behind me, college tuition, you know, camps for their kids, I'm pretty lucky, or not lucky, depending on how you look at it, I don't have all of those demands in my life. I think I'm lucky. But I have two dogs that are very expensive, as Al knows, they're very demanding, too. So I'd really like good vibes for Thursday, at least one-year contract so we can get our retroactive, feel good about the summer, because we're not ending so well. It's not a great year, hasn't been that great. The last couple of days haven't been difficult. I've spent today mostly with union members that are unhappy, rightfully so. There's some major issues we have to iron out before I leave, and they feel maybe a little bit better about coming back in September. And I do feel that retroactive, a full three-year contract would really work, but the one year we will take, and then hopefully believe in good faith we can negotiate the language and come back, sing a song together, and get it ironed out. But let's definitely hope that Thursday, we leave with a contract. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Would anyone else like to speak at this time? Turn yet. Okay, very good. Do we have good news?
We do. I don't know if anybody knows, but Chelmsford won the Knowledge Bowl.
Yeah.
So what's, what's great is, it was unbelievable. I have to tell you, I didn't know what to expect when I walked into this, and it was the most exciting event. The kids were on fire, the buzzers were going, I had to put my head down a couple of times, it was, I was getting a little nervous for them, and at one point, I remember looking over and I saw the numbers, and I went, they're gonna win it. And I leaned forward and I looked at Dr. Parks, and he looked at me and said, what? I'm like, they have the numbers, there's no way these kids aren't gonna win it. They won by 90 points, they crushed it. So we have one of the members that will be here tonight for the math and science presentation, and she was on the team, it was unbelievable, so I want to congratulate Chelmsford and their nice big banner. It was a banner, right? The banner's why they won, it's all about the banner. So that was great news, and great news, we've had another successful school year with our students, and school, last day of school is Friday.
Anyone else have anything? I have a communication that I think would be appropriate for everyone to hear. Thank you for your love and support. Jason loved coaching in town and working with the town's athletes. We've been overwhelmed by the support from the community. Thank you for being there during this challenging time. Tara, Abby, and the entire Fletcher family.
I just want to point out that we have a special person on our audience tonight, and she's here with her brother, who's a boy scout, and Monacy served as our student rep last year, and she's back for the evening, so we just say hi.
I could also share while we're doing that, the names of the people that will be joining us, and I hope I pronounced them correctly, but Kate Petka and Maggie Potter will be the student reps this next year. Yeah. So they'll be joining us soon. All right, you want to go to the internship?
Sure. I'll actually ask Dr. Hurst to make the introduction for number two.
Sure. So I'd just like to invite the high school staff up, bring your chairs with you, it's kind of, bring your own tonight. So tonight we have Principal Murray, Dean Black, Dean McIsaac here, along with Mr. Robillard, he's one of our mathematics teachers at Chelmsford High School. About maybe a month ago, six weeks ago, Mr. Robillard and I had a discussion about an internship opportunity for students that he used to spearhead along with one of the counselors that is now retired. And after some changes and some new counselors that are in, he's asked to investigate this process again, for students to provide them with opportunities, and I thought it was wonderful. So he got together with, it's Jen Orsini, who's in Whittier House, is one of our counselors, to talk about how they could offer these opportunities out for students. And they're here tonight just to tell you a little bit about, you know, the process, what they used to do, what they're thinking of doing now, and to allow you to ask some questions, and go from there. So I'm gonna turn it over to Mr. Robillard and the staff.
Thank you. So as you mentioned, we, we all know that we have a segment of our senior population, most are heading off to a four-year college. We do have a smaller segment of our population that doesn't necessarily have a plan as to what they're gonna do after high school, and that, being unsure what we think we can do and what we did four years ago, myself and Mike Fanning, who was a guidance counselor who has since retired, we came up with the idea of piloting an idea of this internship program. So we started off with three students, this is about four years ago, brought them in, asked them what their interests are. These are students who were fine academically, but maybe the classroom setting wasn't necessarily their cup of tea. So what we did was we asked them what they were interested in, what kind of occupation they might want to go into, and so I went out and I found businesses within the community that would be willing to take them on. Now, the challenge with our schedule is that we have a rotating schedule, so what we had to do is book it as a double block, where they would go up for a double block, if it, if it ran into plus block, they would stay during plus block. So there was a lot of communication that had to happen between myself and those businesses to make sure that, that was clear to them, that they weren't gonna be showing up at the same time every day. Of the three students, so one of them was interested in auto mechanics, so I set him up with an internship at Drumhill Ford in their maintenance department. Another young lady was interested in hair design and makeup, so we got her an internship at Image up on Drumhill. And another young man was interested in landscaping, so this is second semester, so landscaping was difficult for second semester starting in January, so we matched them up with Mahonies. And all three of them had, had an interesting experience. Two of them had a great experience. The boy who went to Drumhill Ford, he immediately became immersed in learning different things that were going on there. He had a great mentor there who would put him on, when, when things were slow, he would put him on the computers so he'd have to see the tests that he'd have to pass in order to get certifications, to let him realize that it's not a mechanic's job of 20 years ago, these cars are different now, and they're, they're computers, basically. An interesting story about that young man is that he came back from April break, and he hunted me down and said, Mr. Robillard, I worked a 40-hour work week last week, even though it was unpaid. He just went in over his April break and worked 40 hours at Drumhill Ford, which just showed that it struck a passion with him, right? The young lady who went to Image, she immediately actually got hired just to be a receptionist over the weekend for them, which was great. And then on her time when she would be there during the week and it would be slow, some of the stylists would take her back and show her different techniques and things like that. So as of a few years ago, she was still working there. She then did a post-grad year at Neshobatech so she could, you know, get into that profession. The third, third young man didn't have quite the experience. He struggled towards the end of the year in general, but at the same time, it was an experience that he, he learned from, so it was great. So you can see, I think you have the sheet in front of you, there's some characteristics of students that we're looking at, they not necessarily aren't going to college, some of them may be, but they're unsure if this is the, the route they want to go, or potentially the, the path they want to take. As I said before, there are some who just struggle in the, in the classroom setting, and maybe what they, what they need to do is just get some experience out in the workforce, and that might be something that'd be a little, little more exciting for them. So I think we have it set up so it'd be 10-credit program, and... So I think we have it set up, so it'd be ten-credit program, and it would be practical arts that we have. And so that's essentially what we've done so far, and we'd like to just kind of jumpstart that again next year, if possible.
Sure. So as you're talking, you know, I'm thinking, what about if you did something, or you would consider maybe a little bit of the reverse? Instead of waiting for the student to come in and say they're interested in hair design or automotive, imagine going to businesses and cross-section of businesses, introducing them to the program, and see if they would be willing to participate. So now you would have a certain number of jobs going into these kids. You wouldn't have to wait for the kids. You'd be able to say to the kids, listen, we have ten automotive jobs, we have three HVAC jobs, we have four of these, two of those. Because in the reverse, it's a little bit more challenging. The reason I say that is because we've instituted that in some gateway cities. And I support and help start the Lawrence Partnership Association, or Foundation, and that is something that we did. We went to businesses, we asked them if they'd be willing to donate an intern job, and it's really worked out well. And this filtered all the way down to high school kids. So that might be like a little bit of a laundry list that you could just look through, and somebody look at and say, geez, I didn't really know anything about working in the, you know, with flowers, and, you know, that piqued my interest, and I took that intern, as opposed to just saying, okay, what do you want to do? Because they might not know what they want.
Right.
Does that make sense?
Yeah, I understand that.
So maybe give that some thought. And I commend you, what a great opportunity, and that's how it starts, that's how it starts. Great job.
How does this differ from the services that are already provided by Neshoba Valley Technical High School?
I don't know if you...
So I know from the experience that I had in my previous district, like for instance, it grew to what you said. It started off, they started finding the small businesses to kind of help, and once it started gaining traction, for the business association, Rotary started coming in asking, hey, we have these people available to us. So the last luncheon that I went to at the end, we had a girl who said, the whole time she wanted to be a CPA, CPA. So we had a luncheon with their mentor, and then she, her phrase was, I wanted to be a CPA, now I just want to run away. And she, she had a great time.
She's brilliant.
She loved it, she said, this is not my thing. She wants to do something more in marketing, something like that. So it broadens out, and so to your point, kids got the experience, but then now they realize, if I'm gonna go to a four-year school and spend mom and dad's money, well, then I want to really look at my major. So going back to your question here, it's just giving some opportunities during the school time, before they have to make that big decision, or before that change of life comes at eighteen. Now, everyone's gone, what am I gonna do, I'm here.
Yep, that's a, that's a college-track profession. I mean, you really need to be a CPA, a college degree.
Correct.
But Neshoba offers these programs that don't require a college degree, you know, auto mechanics and hair.
It's a great experience to be in a business.
That I've heard in the past is that students who, when they're in eighth grade, are making decisions on where they're gonna go to school, and sometimes maybe not realizing that this might have been the path they should have chose. Once they get to Chelmsford High School, sometimes it's difficult to bounce back over to Neshoba.
Okay.
And so this has given them that opportunity for those students.
And you know what else it does, gentlemen? It allows that student or that individual to, you know, get a little bit of practical experience, right? And maybe go to a community school. I'm a big fan of community schools, I just think, I think the world of community schools, I think we have fifteen in the state. But going to a community school, they can get some of that experience that you would get in a four-year school, but also they're able to work part-time towards their apprenticeship. And also these community schools, they help move you into that direction also, if it's HVAC, plumbers, electricians. So yeah, that's, the community schools, don't discount that, that jump to a community school.
When you talk about community schools, do you mean community colleges?
Yes.
Oh, okay, I got it.
And Tom Wright's working on that right now. He's actually, we have an options fair for kids at the end, what do they want to do afterwards? And there's different businesses and different organizations that get involved in it. So now he's combining with Neshoba Tech, Westford, and there's one other town, we're gonna have an options fair rotating between the three districts, for the exact reason you're saying. He said, hey, what are some other opportunities? We have some in-house, or in-house meaning within our community, and, but there's other ones available, so we put in them all in one area. And this would be a nice way of piggybacking and going hand-in-hand with something that's organized, it's in the spring with Tom's, and something that can start in September, and parlay into hopefully something within those fields.
Teach me about the PG years with these, some of these high schools that you can take, Whitty Evoked, the Shobba Tech. Did you, am I correct that there's an opportunity for the kids after Chelmsford High to go there for a year? Just explain that a little bit, and how does that process work?
That one I'm not as familiar with, because I haven't had that.
Right, so there's a fifth-year program in Neshoba Tech. So for students that are looking to possibly look at, like whether it's cosmetology or the industrial arts, they have the opportunity to go to Neshoba Tech for that fifth year in order to gain those skills. So that's open to all of our students if they do decide to go that route. And typically, and I think, actually, to go back to your question, I think it's, if you were to look at the statistics for Chelmsford, the majority of our students go to either a two- or four-year college, most likely a four-year college. So we are more of a college-track district. We are starting to see some changes in that, but this is to provide those students with that opportunity of, they're not quite sure what to do. And to also get them out in the workforce and working with other people, right? What is it like to work for someone else and be part of that? So it's important that we try to, you know, capture and provide those opportunities for those students, but there is that fifth-year program in Neshoba.
Dr. Hirsch, do we, I've never heard of it, so how do, how do the students know about this? Or do we have fairs that we encourage this?
They typically work with their guidance counselors at Chelmsford High School, so we have a good idea of who some of these students are. So they're working with their guidance counselors. And then I know that Shobba Tech does offer the opportunity for students to go there and look at the fifth-year programs.
I would just say that in terms of the post-grad, it is a great program in Neshoba Tech. About five or six of my students in Hawthorne House are going there in September, but a lot of them are struggling with what to do. So this internship would be a great segue for that, to be able to try intern with an electrician, for instance, or something like that. Yes, I love that, I'm gonna go and focus on that, or no, I don't like that, I'm gonna look into something else. So it's a segue into that for that kid who doesn't, is really not sure, as most eighteen-year-olds aren't sure, whether they're going to college or not, they're still figuring it out, you know?
Yeah.
Well, we gotta do this, Principal Murray, we have to get businesses to volunteer jobs for our kids that are unsure. I'm gonna tell you, this average seventeen-year-old kid, if he's not going to a four-year school or a two-year school, he's, or she is, lost, what am I gonna do next? So imagine just being able to have this à la carte menu that they could try a particular job, and if they like it, there's options for them, because now we can introduce them to Whitty Evoked, Neshoba, why just Neshoba, by the way?
Because that's where our students go, that is our, that's our technical school, it's based on your area.
So you mean to tell me if I want to, because there are some vocational schools that don't have all the same opportunities that, like maybe Whitty Evoked has certain...
Right, certain programs.
That's right, I've been to all, you know, all the...
Chelmsford falls within the Neshoba Tech regional area, so they...
So they would have to go there.
That's one of their options, right? They would, I don't know if they can petition to go up to Whitty or Tech.
You can.
Okay.
Oh, yeah, this is good stuff. Maybe you could take a moment to comment about the options fair, because I think that's really a great day, and I don't know if some people know about it.
So our career center with Cindy Atchison and Tom Wright does an options fair, and they go out to area communities and areas surrounding towns, and it's a time where they all come into one building, it used to be at our school, now we're gonna rotate it between three schools, where kids can come around and they can interview the people in those businesses, chiropractor, an accountant, you could say someone who does sales. And they go around and they meet these people to kind of get an idea, hey, what I want to do? Do you want to pursue this? There's cards, they get information, contacts, or at least they know an industry they might want to go into. So this is a fair that, that we're hoping that'll be so much more robust, robust with two other sending schools, districts, that the kids have much more options to go to, we'll bus them there, we'll host sometimes, et cetera. And it gives the kids the idea of, hey, what's out there beyond high school, and what are things I can try?
And a lot of them are really non-traditional. For example, going into photography, and things like that, that, you know, there are ways, there are places to go for those, as I say, non-traditional things, and I think that that, that day is really a good day, because they, I never thought, I mean, we've talked about, even with these options, relatively traditional. These are things that you'd never think about doing, a lot of them, so I think that, you know, that's a good thing to continue.
I think that the collaboration of the three-plus towns is...
I swear, I just touched it. I didn't say anything to it, I just touched it.
Anyways, because we don't send a ton of kids to the Shoba post-grad, or it's a relatively small population, it's hard to get a lot of those businesses to come just to Chelmsford High School. But with the three or four schools that we're making collaborative through the efforts of Tom Wright and Cindy Atchison, it makes it much more worth the businesses' while to send representatives, and so we're hoping that's going to help provide more opportunities for the kids, you know, to see what's out there.
Would a student be able to, I want to be an architect when I grow up, I want to be an engineer when I grow up, would they be able to go to you with a career, and then you could fill the internship?
That is a hope, I mean, that is a hope.
That's hard.
It is, it's hard. Some areas are harder than others, but I do know that in my previous experience, the ones that started going, it had been around for several years, it started getting larger, other communities, other businesses wanted to get involved, so they started giving us names, and we tried to match them up, almost like, similar to the Chelsford Alumni Association, they have all these scholarships for certain scholars, how do you match a kid up to that scholarship? They did something similar. The other benefit to that is then businesses got to see what's going on in our schools. And then with that, some were actually donating, either people helping out in classrooms at certain levels, or supplies or monetary benefits to us, because they started seeing what's going on. It's a great partnership, and I like that Scott jumped on this, and this way we can start bringing our community together and see what's going on within our four walls that we do so well.
We have to do this, because what is the percentage of kids in our schools, of our seniors, that don't go to a four-year or a two-year school? Rough.
I don't have the numbers on the top of my head, but I would say that it's a small percentage. Most of our students go, and I wouldn't say over ten, I would even say it's more like a five percent.
Yeah, it's under ten, for sure.
So there's thirty or forty kids that aren't going to school.
See, how many kids would be interested?
We haven't yet, because we wanted to make sure we have the approval here for us before we get people and say, that's the school, and he said, no, we didn't want to do that, we wanted to make sure we got a process first, so...
We have plenty of kids in mind.
Yeah, we do, we have plenty, exactly.
Yeah, I mentioned it to a couple of guidance counselors anyway, and they already had people in mind, right?
How do we, how do we help you do this? What do we need to do?
So I think the first thing is just let us explore and get started, so we can start looking at businesses and start matching up to the kids that are some of our guidance counselors have already identified. That'd be great, and that's some of our summertime work.
Can we, can I just emphasize one more? How can we get, we can get businesses to volunteer jobs. Please take that, don't, don't try to go match the kid with a, the child with a job. Let the jobs go out there, and let the child order like off a menu, does that make sense? And please, I'd love to help you guys with that if you run into any problems, but, you know, I think this is a great idea. I think we should hundred percent endorse this.
I would encourage you to go to the Chelmsford Business Association.
Yeah, absolutely.
Yeah, we've talked to the Chelmsford Business Association, you know, they're right on board with this.
We can even go to like chambers of commerce, you know, we can put these guys...
Slow and steady, we're gonna look at the criteria.
I want to go big and fast.
Yeah, you're like, you already have this, you know, completely done. We're looking at, you know, a small population, kids, see how it works, and we have to morph it, you know, from there. But no, I appreciate, I love the enthusiasm, but we have to, you know, see how this works.
All right, so what do we do next?
I think we basically endorse the proposal. We support the guys in any way that they need it. No specific motion, really, it's, there's no formal approval that's necessary, it's not like there's money involved or anything. It's more informational, kind of tell you what the high school's been working on, I think conceptually it's a great concept. Anything we can do to support you throughout the summer or fall, as you really kind of launch this, let us know. And maybe we can arrange for time for you to come back late fall, during the end of the first semester, and just kind of report on what's happening. As you're doing this, if there are any kind of roadblocks that come along the way, or if there's any connections or contacts that you need, you know, please feel free to talk to me, any members of the school committee, and, you know, we can, we can try to push this. Even if you do develop literature on this or whatnot, let us know, so that we can kind of put it out there as a, kind of market this a little bit for the kids. But I think it's a great idea, I think it's certainly worth going with, and I support it. I'm glad that the school committee is in favor of supporting it, and we'll be interested to hear how it goes.
I just have a nuts and bolts question, would it be pass, fail, or?
I would believe it would be pass, fail.
Yeah, that's correct.
Or maybe even, you know, completed, I hate to get it, you know, okay, that's fine.
Thank you, everyone, appreciate the time, thank you.
Hey Linda, while you're on it, what are other topics that are practical arts? What else fulfills the practice, is it a requirement, is practical arts a requirement?
Steve, before you run away, have a seat for just a second. So for our practical arts, we have the furniture class, which is the engineering class, we have the, oh, I need my program of studies. Do you have your program of studies in your rolodex?
How many, how many practical arts requirement, is it a requirement for graduation? And how many credits are required?
It's fifteen, is it?
Fifteen.
Fifteen, fifteen credits, correct, yeah.
I'm sorry, I needed, I have to switch to that. Okay, now, you...
Kind of like home, you can go now.
Thanks again.
Our third item on the agenda this evening is our spotlight on the departments, and we're continuing this month with our look at mathematics and science. Before I invite, yep, sit right down, before I invite Matthew up, I just want you to know, Margaret had mentioned earlier about English and social studies up being highlighted, we didn't forget them. There was a scheduling snafu when the budget meetings got moved around in April to try to accommodate a night. And the night that the regular school committee meeting got moved to, Stephanie couldn't accommodate. So we are gonna actually put that on for us for the fall, because we usually don't have anything in September, because school's just going back, but I don't want you to think we forgot you. And we can coordinate that date with Stephanie and make sure it's highlighted in the fall.
Thank you.
Okay, you know, you're welcome. And now, Dr. Brannavant and staff, please come on up and share the mathematics and science update with us.
Thank you so much, Mr. Chairman, Dr. Lang, Dr. Hirsch, members of the school committee, thank you so much for having us here today. We're here to spotlight the mathematics and the science at all the three levels that we accommodate, at the high school level, the middle school level, and the elementary level. Let me first by introducing our panel here to share with you tonight, not necessarily in order which we're gonna present, but we have Carol Bruhl, who is our high school biology teacher, and also served this year as our facilitator for the science. We have Dan Williams, who is a high school mathematics teacher. Sachi Badola is our student representative, she's a seventh-grade student from Parker, and she'll be speaking about her experience doing math and science at Parker, and some of the initiatives she's been doing with us with the Math with Matthew theme here. Donna Foley is our middle school math and science coach, and Ann Swisbien is our elementary math and science coach. And we're gonna spend a few minutes talking about each of those different areas. Let's move along, if we could, please. Linda Sherman should be ready to be able to move on to the slides.
Keep talking, talk through it, Matt.
Before we go into each of these here, we have many exciting things that we're going to share, both from the perspective of academics, as well as clubs and activities, as we try to promote student interest and engagement in learning the mathematics and the sciences, while we try to build conceptual understanding. There is a lot to this within the STEM field, in which we want our students to be well-versed and understand the concepts, but we also want them to be able to enjoy and explore it in a creative manner. And so throughout our presentation, we're gonna highlight each of those different areas where our success has occurred, and also where our student interest engagement through clubs and activities has occurred as well. So let us begin first with our high school mathematics, and Dan Williams.
Thank you for having me here, I'm Dan Williams, I'm a geometry and trigonometry teacher at the high school. We have a great math department, really just can't say enough about them, and it's an honor to work with everybody every single day. So first off, I just want to talk about what courses we offer, as you can see, that's our high school mathematics, scope and sequence. We offer twenty-six different math courses, that's different topics, as well as different levels for the courses. And we also offer different electives as well, such as computer science. Students can, but they are not required to double up, and we do have many students that double up in grades ten through twelve, such as if you're on the calculus track, you want to take calculus. Statistics is a very popular double-up class as well, and same with the computer science. We offer different AP courses, we offer Calc AB, Calc BC, Statistics, and Computer Science for AP. And we also, as a department this year, have created a shared drive throughout the teachers, where we're all sharing our resources on OneDrive, it's sort of like Microsoft's Dropbox. And we're making it easier for all of our teachers to work together and share the resources of all these different courses that we teach. We are in the last year of installing a new curriculum. This upcoming year, we are buying new books and reworking the curriculum for our senior classes. And many of our courses have gone to the Big Ideas Math, but not necessarily all of them. These books up there are the books of the Big Ideas Mathematics. These books up there are the books of the Big Ideas Mathematics. And we are staying on top of, we're always on the forefront of technology in our department. We have many classes, they use iPads in the class, we have Apple TV that we utilize, we have Enel boards and smart boards that our teachers use all the time. Our whole school has a website, iXL, that we have logins for all the students, which is a math practice website, and we have started testing out another site that's very similar called Novri, and they are great supplements to our curriculum. And we can go to the next slide now. We have been doing quite a bit of community outreach this year. This past year, I was able to go as well with Sachi and Matthew to the Learn Launch Boston Conference. We're one of about 20 schools selected to present at it, and we presented about our math music videos and making learning interesting. And it was really interesting, the student-led Sachi got to give a little ignite session talk, it went over great. We're still in talks with different schools such as WPI about working with them and creating new videos on how we can reach students and show math in all different ways. We are going to be in October doing MasQ, which is a very similar conference, and it's meeting at Gillette Stadium, so that's another thing that we're looking forward to doing. We, our latest music video that we created was "I Can Learn It Like That," which is based off "I Can Make Your Hands Clap," a great song that promotes solving and teaching math problems multiple ways. And lastly, about the community outreach, this Saturday, we are having an event with the Lowell Spinners, where Chelmsford Public Schools is hosting Joyful Math Night, so if anybody's looking for anything to do this Saturday, that's a great way, and I believe there's even fireworks at the end of it as well too, which is always a great time, so hopefully we can see a couple of you there. We continue to have high performance on the MCAS and AP tests. We have, we don't have the grades from this past year's testing yet, but our 2016 MCAS grades, we got a CPI of 97.2, where the state average is an 89.7, so we continue to excel in that. And our AP tests, we had 125 people in the 2015-2016 year, take them, 28 Calc AB, 16 Calc BC, 13 Computer Science, and 68 Stats, and 79.2% of them scored between 3 and 5 of them, which again is very high, very, very good. And again, just as, we just had graduation, and we again have many, many, many students going off to top schools, going into STEM professions, engineering, and we just continue to put out students that are very successful in their college years. Thank you.
Excellent, and now Carol Bruhl for the high school science.
Alright. So, once again, it's been a very busy and successful year, can you hear me? Okay, good. In the high school science department, we have a very strong creative group of science staff. They each have their own unique skills and talents and areas of expertise, but we all work so hard to bring those kids the best science education we can. So, I have a handout of our scope and sequence because I think a lot of people just don't know what students are doing, so if you, you know, pass those along.
You have a paper?
Yes. Take a moment to look that over, and if you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer that. All students enter the school as freshmen either in biology or physical science, and that depends on what column, what track they're in on the handout. So, if you are the majority of a freshman, you would be in physical science or H2, which is like a college prep level. If you need a little more help, you might go into Biology I, it's a two-year bio course. And if you want to accelerate your science experience, you can go right into 10th grade honors biology. And then from there, there are options galore for students. The typical pathway is biology, chemistry, physics, but our students can double up on science if they're really interested and if they want to take more courses. So, it's through our electives and independent studies and science clubs that students have the opportunity to take what they learn in the core courses and go into depth in an area of interest or explore more fields. And each year, we have a lot of accomplishments, I'm seeing what visuals I have there. So, I'll begin with this bottom corner there, the 9/11 memorial bench. So, we have a tech ed department, it's construction, industrial technology, architecture, engineering. That 9/11 memorial bench needed repairing, so Doug Greenfield's construction kids refurbished that bench, and it was a labor of love for them. It began last year, they had to recast the steel so that it won't rust, touch up the image, sorry, and reinstall it, and it, a quote from him, "It was a lot of work," but the students are very proud of their accomplishment, and they reinstalled it in the front of the school. It's very nice. See, we have EcoRise. So, the environmental science class, which was taught by Brian Atchison. Last year, he and I joined an organization called EcoRise, and they provide a curriculum for student-led projects. And last year, his students did a water audit, found out all about the leaky faucets and what needs to be repaired, and worked on a grant to install a refillable water bottle station. And we have, I think, three now in the high school. And this year, the students did an exploration and audit, a study of the use of outdoor space at the high school. And one of the areas is the science pond area, and it's called the science pond, but really it's open to all classes if you want to have an outdoor experience. There's Eagle Scouts put a tiered layer of benches where students could sit out and have an experience outside. So, they did a study and decided it would be nice to set up raised garden beds where they could do experimental garden plots for science, as well as plant pollinator garden. He, I got him in touch with monarchwatch.org, and he was able to get milkweed plants to put in one of the plots. And they wrote a grant, the students do all the work, which is really cool because they explore, how do you write a grant, what do you need, what facts do you have to present, and come up with a budget. So, they were able to secure another, I think $1,000 to get the equipment for raised beds. And they're seniors, so they left before they had an opportunity to actually see their plans go to fruition, but next year's students will benefit from that, and then they'll do another audit and go on from there. One of our very popular electives is the biotechnology class. It's a half-year elective, many students take it, it's open to 10th, 11th, and 12th graders after they've taken one year of science. And they get to work on, I'm looking at my notes, hands-on field for what it's like to work in the biotech industry. So, they do real-life labs, very authentic. Teachers Colleen Kelly and Brian Atchison have made it possible to work in conjunction with Professor Gage at UMass Lowell this year. And he does work in isolating muscle proteins, and I don't know any more specifics than that, but once students complete the biotechnology course, they've done an independent study under him as well as Brian and Colleen, and that's gonna, they wrote a grant and secured funding so that this could continue next year as well. And let's see what else is up here. I'll get there. Our clubs have been very active this year. One is our science team, SciO, or the Science Olympiad, and each year they do several different competitions, and they've always come in, in the top 10 schools in the district, and they'll continue to do so. Lucas Wickham is transferring to a different school district unfortunately, but we'll have another teacher take over that so that the students can continue, that has a pretty large enrollment, there's a lot of interest in that, and it's a lot of fun for them. Another new club is the Eco Club, which was founded by juniors Anna Shi and Konmani Kaliban. They were featured on Chelmsford Telemedia just this week where they showed off their compost bins that they, they had to do according, along with EcoRise, they did a food audit, how many food scraps were put into the landfill, put into the landfill from the kitchen, and they worked with the kitchen staff, they worked with the Board of Health, they had to work with the community, and the students themselves collect this, put it in the compost bins, they raised money to get two compost bins for the school. And Anna was honored at the State House this year for being the 2017 Green Difference Maker by, you know, by the representatives at the State House, that was quite an honor. And they used the compost to help plant a garden in the, on the school grounds. Another thing that you can see in the upper right corner, chemistry teacher Colleen Kelly worked with Glynnis Peruccio, who does special ed, and together, they bring the students together to do their science classes. So, this year, they worked with learning about properties of matter and exploring different types of chemistry and reactions, and the kids made Silly Putty and really enjoyed that a lot, and they also made little greenhouses and planted seeds in them, and were able to take those home as well. Glynnis is retiring this year, and we hope that we'll be able to continue this with the teacher that takes over again next year, because the, all the students benefit from this relationship, and it's a really cool thing to see happen and go on in science. Let's see. Oh, so this picture in the upper left-hand corner, the TEA program with UML. Four science teachers, Michelle Kender, Brian Atchison, Linda Tanini, and Colleen Kelly participated, it's TEA, Teaching Excellence and Achieving Program, in which teachers from Nigeria, Ghana, Azerbaijan were in residence in our science department this year, and there were, there were a couple of others in other departments, but I can't say because I don't know, I just know what happened in science, but we had a great time, it was several weeks, and they collaborated with those teachers, they exchanged information on teaching techniques and cultural exchange, and it was a good experience for everyone. And next year, so we're continuing to, we have new science standards, we're in transition right now to the new science frameworks. Under the state guidelines, we're changing not really what we're teaching, but how we're teaching it. It's a real emphasis on process skills in science, on asking questions, analyzing data, collecting data, backing up your claims with evidence, and being able to communicate what you've learned. So, we're in transition with that, we'll be working on that through the next couple of years. We're introducing a few new courses for next year as well. One exciting new class is Mythbusters, it's copied from the TV show, it's a half-year elective, and this is brought to us by our new chemistry teacher, Michael Demers. He ran this course successfully in Wyndham, New Hampshire, and he's bringing that curriculum to us, and Colleen Kelly's going to learn it as well, so we can expand the number of sections we offer in the future. There's another course, PLTW, it's Project Lead the Way, it's going to be taught by physics teacher Dave Steves, it's an engineering and design course, and that'll be new and exciting for us. I believe that the students are introduced to this in the middle school, and it'll now continue into the high school. We've hired two new physics teachers, that'll be starting next year, and I know that we're looking forward to meeting them and having them join our team. They're going to add a lot of energy and new ideas to our department. And that's all the news for science, so do you have any questions, comments, or suggestions?
Do you talk about Mythbusters, I'm just curious.
Yeah, so it sounds really cool, so they're going to, like, just like on the TV show, there'll be some thought, some belief in science, and the students will design a test to test this out. Or they will do, solve a problem, or design something, test something out. So, it's very interest-based and problem-solving, design, and proving things either right or wrong. Anything else?
Yeah, how long has the biotechnology program been in place?
So, I think quite a while now, maybe three or four years?
Four years.
Four years, thank you. Yeah, and that's, every year it just gets better and more and more is introduced. Originally, so through Harvard University and Amgen, there is a program where teachers get trained in biotech and they bring the curriculum to the schools. So, we started that even before we actually had a biotechnology course, several of our science teachers went and had the training, and they provided us with a lot of the equipment that we needed to bring that into our classroom. And that grew into having that as a whole curriculum that takes up a half-year, because it's, you know, it's hard to squeeze in those types of labs in a regular biology class. So, having the biotechnology as an elective has been able to expand on that.
Do you think this would be an area where cooperation with this internship program would be successful?
Absolutely, and that was the idea I had as I was listening, because there's so many biotech firms.
Yeah. UMass Lowell is a hotbed for it, so I would hope that, you know, there will be opportunities for our students.
Yeah, because there, there's a way, without getting a degree in biotech, where you can get certified, it's like, I know BU had offered it, it was like a three-month program where you get a certificate in biotechnology, and you can go and, you know, pipette your life away if you want, but that could lead to something else down the road.
Awesome.
Okay, so we'll move to our student representative, Sachi Badola.
Hi, my name is Sachi Badola, and I'm a 7th grader at Parker Middle School. So, today, I'm really going to be talking about three major, really exciting things that have been happening personally for me and in Parker Middle School. So, I'm going to start off by talking a little bit about learning math and science in middle school. So, there's a large variety of topics covered in both subjects. So, in science, we were introduced to and covered topics that I really never really thought of before, and then I came to 7th grade and I was like, oh my gosh, there is so much to learn, and it really opened my mind about thinking. And so, for some examples of topics in science, like genetics and evolution, and getting an introduction to these topics, and I could come home and discuss it with my mom, and I really, it really expanded my thinking.
Speaking of your mom, she could not be more proud right now.
Thank you. And like in math, we did geometry, Pythagorean theorem, simple interest, consumer math, proportions, and many more topics. I really, what I really, really enjoyed was that there were so many tools, learning tools, that I could use. So, in class, we would use our books and packets, of course, but we would also watch brain pops and movies, expanding our thinking on what we're learning in class. So, we would say we were learning about arachnids, we would watch a video on spiders and get more information and think beyond just what we were given in the books. So, I really, I really liked that, and I loved the way the chapters were organized, and I could like build a foundation. So, in the beginning of science, we talked about cells and cell processes, and then we kind of went into, you know, dissections. I just, last week I did some frog dissections, which is awesome, so I really, so thanks to my teachers, I really feel like I have grown academically this year. So, the next topic is math music videos, so this is really exciting. So, for the past couple of years, Dr. Bayravant has been making these super creative and unique math videos, and I had the honor to participate in some of them. And what we're really going for is, every day I come to class and I sit next to all my friends, and they're all like, oh, we don't want to do math, tests, homework, but I really want them to know that because their mindset can change, they don't have to think in that way, they don't have to think of math and learning and science education as being math and tests and books, it's more than that. And they have to think outside the box, and making these math videos and these, you know, videos about learning, it's really, all my friends are like, wow, this is awesome, and I'm really hoping that it can change their mindset about coming to school and learning, and I really thank Dr. Bayravant for making these awesome videos. So, some examples of videos that we made were, Girls Are All About That Math, which is about, you know, a lot of girls feel like they shouldn't go in the STEM fields, and we want to encourage them because girls are just as awesome as boys. And another video, Teach Me Like You Do, which came out last year, and it was about growth mindset, which is such an important topic that should really be addressed. So, that's mostly what I have to say about the math music videos. And finally, so MasQ is a conference, a technology conference sponsored by the Massachusetts Computer Using Educators. And being a part of the MasQ conference is an incredible opportunity to highlight and showcase to educators across New England the exciting ways that Chelmsford is enhancing teaching and learning with technology. So, I have the great honor of being the Qbyte keynote speaker for this conference, and I will be really talking about my passion for STEM for Girls, growth mindset, music, drama, making the math music videos that our community has been participating in, directed by Math with Matthew. So, that's all I have to say for this evening, thank you so much for having me.
Sachi, will you promise me one thing, when you get to the end of your junior year, will you run for school committee rep? So, you can report on what's going on.
Yes.
Thank you.
I'd like to see your ID because I don't believe you're in the
I'd like to see your ID because I don't believe you're in the seventh grade. You're amazing.
Thank you. Thank you so much.
Finish school. Don't let him re...
Graduate early.
I know, exactly. She'll graduate by Thursday.
Can I just interrupt for two seconds? So Donna, I'm sorry that you have to follow.
Me too.
But I'm just curious, could you touch base briefly on your experience with Knowledge Bowl? Because I know that was exciting.
Yes. The Knowledge Bowl was an incredible, incredible experience, and I'm so thankful that I was a part of it. Thank you, Dr. Ling.
You're welcome.
For, so I think that something that really stood out to me at the Knowledge Bowl was that even though we were the rookie team and we just came, we really, using our motivation because we were the, it was our first year participating, we really worked together as a team. And I feel like all of us grew because we quizzed each other. And at the Knowledge Bowl, I thought that it would be very different. We weren't expecting a win. We were hoping for a win, but we weren't expecting one. And it was a great, it was a great feeling to win. There were, the other schools were amazing, so it was a great challenge for us, but we really persevered, and I'm so proud of my teammates and thankful to my teachers.
You know, you did a great job. Congratulations, just for the first year to be able to get acclimated to the program and how it all works was incredible for the, for the students. So congratulations.
Thank you.
Good. Matthew, I'm sorry.
Okay. And Donna Foley, our math scientist.
Yeah, great. I'm really happy to go now. Well, we do have some, as you can see, middle school math and science is very exciting. And a lot of our students this year really excelled, and we do have some shout-outs to them. For the New England Math League contest this year, in sixth grade, we had eighty-six schools participating. Parker finished eighteenth, and McCarthy thirteenth in that competition. In seventh, there were ninety-one. Parker finished twentieth, and McCarthy thirteenth. And in eighth grade, out of ninety schools, Parker finished fourth out of that, and McCarthy twenty, twentieth. And two of our students actually placed in seventh out of thousands of students. They scored thirty-three out of a possible thirty-five points. They have to do thirty-five questions in thirty minutes. And Aiden Hennessy, and I'm going to apologize if I'm mispronouncing this, which I probably will, but maybe you can help me. Dashan Christinwani? Is that correct? Christinwani? Dashan Christinwani? Well, anyway, that's close enough. Okay? And they both scored in seventh place out of thousands of students that participated. So, great job by them. And then also Continental Math, which is another contest that we participate in. This year, we had four students that scored a perfect thirty points. We've never had four students that got thirty points in that. A lot of teachers actually try these questions to test their own math knowledge while the kids are taking the contest, and they're incredible. So at Parker, we had Rudaset that scored thirty in seventh grade. In eighth grade at McCarthy, we actually had three students, Natalie Tanny, Amanda Curatalo, and Sophia Bolo Boli, I think. So they all got gold medals representing their school, and they all got plaques and awards coming in. So what a great year for them. The students just truly excelled. And there's lots of enthusiasm for both math and science at Parker, as she knows, okay? We have a lot of creatures over there that I've gotten used to, working with science, as Mr. Bruin loves to have snakes, turtles, and he's trying to find homes for all of them right now. So that's been exciting for me, learning how to care for those types of critters. So anyway, I'd also like to thank both Martha Hodery and also Kathy Mercier for their help with the math department this year. They've been outstanding, supportive. And one of the things that Matthew asked me to discuss was the placement process, and we want to thank Kathy for helping us create the spreadsheets that we use for that. One of the things that happens in the middle schools is fifth and sixth grade, all of the students are just heterogeneously placed in mathematics. And seventh grade is the first year that we actually have levels in math. And it's only levels in math at the middle schools. We take that placement process very seriously. We spend a lot of time, and I spend a lot of time, with the teachers, trying to find the best fit for the students mathematically because I think everybody's been in a place in mathematics that it can be spinning around you and not really know what's going on, or it's too slow for you and you're just looking for more knowledge. So one of our jobs as math coaches is to try to get challenges for those students that need the extra challenge, but also support the students that need the extra support. In addition to that, it's hard to describe our positions as math and science coaches because every day it changes. You know, sometimes you're working with teachers and trying to find new lessons or new ways to teach subjects. Sometimes you're working just supporting them, getting materials for them. We're doing pilot materials in science this year, that they're piloting some textbooks this year and next year, and also the FOSS kits that we're working with the science. They're doing all kinds of different activities. The science, the, the science teachers are fabulous. For me, I, the fifth and sixth grade both teach math and science, so those were people that I already knew. And then when we took on the additional roles of science, there were five additional teachers at McCarthy and four at Parker. Wonderful, wonderful staff, and they bring so much excitement to the classrooms. They're, they're fabulous. Math and science are outstanding. I know we have two minutes, so I'm trying to keep that two minutes. So another thing that Ann and I both do as coaches is to research topics. We try to, of course, make sure that all of our curriculum is aligned to the common core, getting the new science standards to the middle school people, having them look through the standards. They've made some adjustments. We're moving some of the kits from one grade level to another grade level because now that's what the science standards are telling us to do. So we have to follow the rules because we're math-science people. Okay? And lot, again, lots of other things, whether it's working with data meetings. And I think that's probably my two minutes because I don't want to take too long because Ann's going to talk too.
The orchestra's not going to start playing.
Okay, all right, well, it might. Get the hook off. But again, one of the things I want to say in closing is, one of the great things in education is that you really never know who it is that you're going to impact or influence. And just trying at the middle school to make sure that these young students keep their minds open to all different fields, not just math and science, but all of those fields. Because then later on in life, they come back, and you just don't know which student it is that you had the biggest impact on. So I congratulate all of the educators in chunks of public schools because they do a fabulous job.
Excellent. Thank you. And Ann, our elementary math science?
So thank you for having me here this evening. I want to talk a little bit about the elementary program. My, my job is to, my job is to facilitate the K through five math and science. So that covers the four elementary schools and then the fifth grades at both Parker and McCarthy. We still are using math expressions as our curriculum because the instructional practices are the things that we need to encourage the growth mindset in math, mathematics. And also the strategies that are used, the multiple strategies, the multiple representations in math that we like to encourage. The inquiry base where students are doing activities and looking at patterns in mathematics and looking at whether they can explain their work and show their work with pictures in a, in a concrete way. And then for those students who are able to go more towards the abstract and be able to write a, a model, like an equation, to represent a solution to a problem. We are also, we also do a lot of intervention work. We have, we were fortunate this year to have a Title I grant, and so we did have some math interventionists in three of the four elementary schools. Three of, three, three of the schools qualified for that. And oftentimes, I would be called upon to interview a student who was struggling. The math expressions has interviews based on the Common Core standards, so we can interview them and find out specifically where they're having a problem and whether or not, what, what is, what is the solution? What, what should we do to help that student get over that struggle? We also, as Donna was saying, we also provide challenge work as well. I can remember working with Aiden Hennessy when he was in elementary school, one of our little superstars in, in math, and also Sachi as well. And so looking for challenge materials for those students who need to go beyond just the regular curriculum. We have continued this year to use benchmark testing to measure student growth. We do that by interviewing kindergarten students one-on-one. And in first grade and second grade, they do a paper and pencil test where they have to show their work and explain what they're doing. And we then gather the data and sit down with the teachers and look at where, where the students are and where they need to be by the end of the school year. We've, we've worked on, over the summer, last year, we worked on pacing guides for math to continue to provide a roadmap for teaching math expressions. And that's especially important for the grades where MCAS is being tested because you want to make sure that you get all the topics in before the test period. So we, sometimes we have to rearrange things so that topics that aren't necessarily covered in depth on a particular MCAS would be pushed to after the MCAS because that's in May. So we push it to after, after MCAS. We, I, we also do practice materials, and especially, especially difficult this year because MCAS was a new version. The state had, had a new version of MCAS. And they provided some practice materials, but it surely wasn't enough. And so we went back and looked at, well, taking the sample questions that they gave us, how could we rework some of the old questions so they looked like the sample questions? So students would have a little bit more of a heads-up on what the questions looked like. Because some, some questions, they were asked to give multiple choices. There were four or five, a question was asked, and there were four or five things, and they were asked to give, to tell which two things were correct or which three things were correct, which is very different from typical multiple choice where there's only one right answer. So we had to get the students ready for that. And hopefully we did. We'll see. We'll see how that goes. We also developed, because we were in our second year with a standard space report card for K through four, we developed common unit tests in mathematics so that every grade, every school in the district for K through four were giving the same unit tests. And we matched up the topics on the test to the standards, the Common Core standards, and how they related to the new standard space report cards. So that made it a little bit easier for teachers to grade because it was very different from just a letter grade or a number grade from years past. We also established benchmarks for those tests as well. What could they do, what would we expect from the students in the first term? What should we expect from them in the second term and so on? And teachers have been using that and using the test to help them grade their students. All of our teachers have math expressions materials through their online access through Think Central. And also, we've been using Steady Island in grades three, four, and five for benchmarks and for practice. And also, we did some piloting of a program called Splash Math for grades one through four to work on online practice materials. So kids get used to working on questions on the computer, if that's the direction we're going to be going in, in the state for MCAS in the future. Some of the math activities, for example, Biim School does a fourth-grade math night for their parents. Some of the teachers also, across the district, do metric Olympics so that the kids get used to measuring with, with the metric system. In science, we had a second, a second year of our pilot program, and the committee decided to adopt the FOSS science kits so that students, it's, they're aligned to the new national and state science standards. And we're looking, the teachers were looking for sci, a curriculum where kids were doing science, not just reading about science, so that it will feed into the middle school and the high school in a much more seamless way. So we are adopting this coming school year, 2017-18, a new kit in each grade level. So in kindergarten, they are going to be doing trees and weather. In grade one, sound and light. In grade two, solids and liquids. Grade three, motion and matter. And grade four, energy. So each grade is going to do one kit, and they're all physical science this year. And then, depending upon how that goes, then the next year, we'll move into probably, I'm thinking, earth science will probably be the second one. And then that, and then the third year, they'll go into biology, so our physi, life science. For grade five, they're different because they have science every day. And so they're going to, they've done two of the three kits, and they're going to add a third kit this coming school year. So in physical science, they will be doing mixtures and solutions. In earth science, they'll be studying the earth and the sun. And in life science, they'll be doing living systems. And they're all ready for full implementation for 2017-18. And we'll also, this summer, develop a little roadmap for all of these kits so that people, the teachers can have a little, sort of a roadmap to follow the standards and make sure that they're getting in all the activities in each of the kits and really learning the materials in the kits. So thank you. Yes.
I have a question about the Title I.
Yes.
So you said three schools qualified for Title I.
Yes, yeah.
Title I reading in all of our elementary schools. Is that correct?
No.
So only three of our elementary schools qualify for Title I intervention. So that is for both reading and for mathematics, and they're only in those three schools. We did have them in four the year prior through a waiver, but the last school did not qualify again.
And is this the first year we've had math coaches? Or has that been part of the Title I? No, this is the first year.
This is the first year with not, no, math coaches?
Math interventionist.
Sorry, sorry, math interventionist, Title I.
Yeah.
Interventionist, yes, coaches, no.
No, no, we had math interventionist, two years, last year and this year.
Okay, good.
Yep.
Thank you. That's it.
And we won't know whether we get any funds until, I believe it's July, maybe.
Yeah, it's about the end of July, we start getting our allocations for the next year's grants. So that would be Title I, Title II, Title III.
Don't get your hopes up.
I know.
Yeah.
Any comments, questions?
Anything?
Thank you very much. No, we very much appreciate you coming and sharing the good work that you've done over the course of the year. So thank you very much.
Thank you.
Keep up the good work.
Do you have it?
You have one.
The presentation for the...
Nope. So you need that back on.
Yep. And we're going to transition now and invite Danielle Collins, our Director of School Nutrition, up. It's going to take me just one second to pull up her PowerPoint, but I will do so. And then she's going to walk us through a year in review with food service, talk a little bit, oop, talk a little bit about the meal price adjustment that we don't have to make for next year, and then also our procurement contract. So she's going to review those with us. So welcome, Danielle. And if you'd like to start, I'll have this ready in one second, and we'll put it up.
Well, for those of you who don't know, my name is Danielle Collins. I'm the School Nutrition Director, and I'm going to go over some of the things that we have from this year, where we're finishing and where we're moving forward. So, I don't know if I should begin without...
I'm working on it.
Take your time.
Hang in there for a sec. She is much better.
I could do a preamble. I could do a dance.
Did you see that the Tom Brady Diet was developed and lodged by someone from Chelmsford?
No, I didn't know that. I didn't know that.
That's, yeah, Campbell.
Alan Campbell.
Interesting. I'm going to have to look that up.
Yeah, it was just in the paper within the last few days.
Very interesting. I'll have to look further into it.
We're wrapping up. I will do the movement for you.
Okay. Okay. So these are the things that we began in the year fifteen, sixteen. I just wanted to report where we are with things. We started send money to school as a means for parents to send in electronic payments for their students. We've received nearly $310,000 in deposits to date. It'll actually... It'll actually be a little higher when we close the year this year. Just a little information about Department of Defense grants. Those are the fresh fruits and vegetable programs that we've been taking part in the past two years. Year one was an intro year prior to my arrival and we received $6,000 for that funding. The following, it depends how you manage your money, how much you're able to receive the following year. So we received $15,000 last year, but there is further opportunity later in the year if you manage your monies well, to go in for monies that other people aren't managing well. So in other words, like towards the end of the year, if there's money that districts haven't utilized properly, it goes back into the pool and you can solicit those funds. So last year, instead of getting $15,000, we actually got just over $22,000. This current year, we were only able to get $15,000 because the Department of Defense is going out to bid for, for next year. So they're looking into other vendors and because of that, no funds were available to school districts. So it's just a $7,000 difference from this year to last year, only because the funds weren't available. They bid out for three-year terms. So moving forward, I would imagine that we would be entitled to $15,000 or more. So just to report on that. This year, I encompassed School Nutrition and Fitness onto our website. Basically, our reporting system for nutritional information, both to parents, nurses, the school community, more than, you know, as we move forward, we want kids to advocate for themselves, whether they're severely diabetic or they have allergies. This software program enables us to report, create report cards for each of our schools where, let's say you're diabetic. You can hover over the day's meal and it will give you a report card. And I snapped a picture of it just to give you an example. But you can go in and check the boxes of the items you intend to eat or the portions that you intend to eat so that it will calculate your carbs exactly. They're exact items that I enter into the database so that it is very accurate. And it also features any allergens. So for someone with a less common allergy, if you look on anything and you scroll over, it'll tell you if that item might contain wheat or, you know, if you have a gluten intolerance or something to that effect. So it's, it's all listed there. Two other features involved with this software are that parents have the ability to get an app on their telephone so you can look up today's menu. So it's, you know, it's convenient for parents. They really love that. The Go Green feature makes it so that once I post the menus, and I typically post the menus, like I have September's menus posted already so parents can plan accordingly. I typically try to post two weeks prior to the start of the month. Because, let's say you're on vacation, parents are still wondering, okay, well, what lunches will you be getting there? What do we need to, you know, purchase from home? So Go Green means that any family can sign up for the menus to be automatically sent to them via email or some other way so that you don't have to print the menus and they would have those available. It was actually very affordable. Nutritional database software costs districts on average between eight and $9,000. But I collaborated with other districts, so 10 of us went in for this. And in the initial year, we paid $1,195 and like $95. And moving forward, it's only $995 because you don't have to pay the setup fee. So it's very affordable for what we're getting out of it. So that's been very positive. The feedback has been great from parents. So, and I do think it's super helpful, especially for kids that, you know, are managing their own nutritional needs. So if you wanted to, oh, Orange Leaf. So we launched Orange Leaf in the high school this year. We found an Orange Leaf vendor that would pre-portion exactly a four ounce portion. You know, they, they actually soft serve and then they freeze it hard. And then we have special coolers that will, you know, defrost it somewhat so that it's the right consistency of frozen yogurt so that the kids could enjoy a healthy option that, you know, is somewhat trendy and they enjoyed. So it's typically fruit flavors because we have to stick to the nutritional data. The nutritional data is all available on the website. They're single serve, so they're protected for allergies. So that's something we launched this year, so I just wanted to share that.
Available at all the schools?
No, just the high school.
Okay.
We can, we can only sell à la cartes at the high school and the middle school.
Okay.
We figured we'd try it at the high school and see how it went. We could expand potentially to the middle schools, but we just wanted to play it by ear in year one. I had to actually get a New Hampshire vendor to come here and she had to, you know, we had to go out to bid. So it took, it takes a long time to bring them on board. But yes, it finally happened. So how are we doing? Just to report on district participation. So whenever we do a price increase, which as you recall, last year we had to, we were out of regulation because we weren't charging at least the reimbursement rate. So we were forced to move up in our pricing. Initially, you tend to have dips in your participation rate, so I just wanted to reflect those. We did have a slight dip in October. You know, we increased by about three, just over 3% moving into December. And then by April, it was up to 34.76, which is, which is virtually where we were, you know, last year. Overall, for the whole entire year, we sold an additional 802 meals. And I just wanted to illustrate, that's it from the initial price dip and then up. So it's, it's pretty consistent, other than that little dip. Our bids for, moving forward for 1718, this is something that we've, you vote on every year and I just wanted to share with you. So we go out to bid for all of our basic needs, our grocery needs, dairy, paper, our water vendor, our bread. And these are, so we're currently involved in the Tech Collaborative and it's 96 districts within Massachusetts. And however, at the end of it, this is what our portion of the bid is. And it's broken down by line item. We have procurement audits coming in the coming years, so it's very important that we follow our procurement practices very carefully and just make sure that all of, all of our ducks are in a row as far as procurement goes. So we, we have all the documentation to back all of this and how we go out to bid and how we solicit for bids and all of that. So these are the final awards for the 1718 year. Okay, so I'd like to report that we do not need to raise prices in the year 1718. I ran the PLE analysis, which signifies paid lunch equity. The federal reimbursement rates for the coming year are $2.86 for lunch and $1.66 for breakfast. But when we ran the PLE tool, we do not need to increase prices for the coming year. So I ran an analysis about a 15 cent increase or no increase, but we don't have to and I recommend that we don't. I don't think that we need to do that at this time. We will probably be fine exactly where we are until the 1920 school year where we'll have to look at it again and see where we, you have to run the PLE tool every year, but we won't likely need an increase at least, you know, until 1920. So these are the options. I just proposed it the way I did last year. This would be, you know, 15 cent increase of the prices that we currently have to what it would be, or no increase. We would have to look at it again in 19 and 20. If we did increase, we could likely not look at it for three years. But the federal rates change year to year, so my recommendation is no increase. Equipment projects. Okay, so the things that we accomplished this year, they were mainly about the Board of Health. So we had to replace the, the length of our faucets. Our, some of our things were out of compliance. So we did that at Parker, the high school. We added RFP behind our sinks and in our, in our storage areas. It's, it's a plastic. It just protects the walls. It's, it's not glamorous by any means, but it keeps us in codes. We took care of that. Our, we're projected to handle the Biim Schools for the walk-in refrigerator and freezer for this year. And, you know, discussing this with Kathleen, they're looking about around $75,000 to redo everything. It's complicated, you know, even the, even the concrete in the base, you know, needs to be looked at it. So this is, this is full and comprehensive. The additional things I'm proposing for repairs with the remaining money from that budget are to add a convection oven at Harrington and one at South Row. The priority being that if we intend to move from preferred meals, we need those convection ovens in place. And so I've gathered quotes and forwarded those along. It's actually pretty reasonable. And a warmer unit for McCarthy School. I've been shuffling, shuffling around some of the warmer units that we have in place, but we really needed an additional one for McCarthy. And it's short money. It's like $1,500. It's not, it's not big money. And then, these are the gardens. So I actually, I actually worked with the ECO Club throughout the year. Anna Shee and the rest of the ECO Club, we formed, you know, they started with the water project, not this academic year, the prior academic year. And then when they were proceeding on to what, you know, moving to the compost stations and moving into gardening and their, their larger plan, we came up with a system where, you know, we met with the Board of Health and all of the interested and, and anybody that would have any impact on it. So we're, we're saving our food waste from the kitchen as we're doing salad prep and we're adding that to the compost pile. And it was a wonderful learning with the student groups. And we had buckets in the kitchen and they rinsed them every single afternoon when they dumped to the compost and turned the compost. And then they're like, well, we want to turn this compost into something. I'm like, oh, great. So they came up with this garden. These are actual pictures of the plants that they planted in the garden. So if you look right behind where the nutrition office door is, there are their two compost bins where they turn each and every day. And then alongside where the benches are, there wasn't anything there. They've built an entire garden. So they had a huge planting. These are pictures of some of the plants that they planted. They're drought tolerant. They looked at the sprinkler systems. We met with the Board of Health. It was absolutely unbelievable. I had such a wonderful time working with the ECO Club. They were amazing. So to see these beautiful gardens every morning when I come in, it's just absolutely gorgeous. So these are some of the, you know, obviously the plants are, you know, in their baby forms now, but this is what, these are actual plants from the garden. So it was, it was wonderful to work with the students this year. And I think that's, oh, where are we going? So I've looked over the life expectancy of everything we have in all of our kitchens to basically analyze what our immediate needs, what our capital expenditure plan should be over the next two or three years, our staffing needs, immediate and long-term, as well as develop, development of our program. And I'll meet with Joanna and Jay to talk about those things in the future. But we, I have a pretty clear plan in place as to what needs to be replaced and when and what, with what priorities. Because obviously, as we bring additional equipment along and we have more opportunity to create new things in the kitchen, we have to have the labor to support that. So I've come up with like a schematic for, you know, our plan of action. That was it for me.
I'm trying to get you back up, I'm sorry. Your last slide was too close.
It was just basically if you have questions. You haven't missed anything. Don't worry about that.
Do you want to take a negative?
What is it?
Do you want to take a negative?
Yes.
Hearing rumors. Maybe there's not enough salad anymore? What's going on with the salad at the high school?
Oh, no. So actually, there's, there's a, there's a direct reason as to what was going on with salad. We got double whammied. So just as I expressed to you, we have Department of Defense for which I allot. So once again, in years past, I was able to capitalize on the additional $7,000 plus dollars at the close of the year. So that was all built into our budget under that line item. Well, then the price of produce went through the roof, like commercially. If you, if you went to the food store, your lettuce was like $3 ahead. So we were faced with a dilemma. Okay, so do we continue serving salad and what, double the price to people? You know, do we bring in that price change on this one item in the middle of the year? So we decided to go another route and try to do alternative options. I said, listen, we're, at this point, we're much better off just going, let's do fresh fruit. Let's do these alternatives. Let's look at what we can do because the price of a salad was going to be absolutely through the roof. And faced with that dilemma, I'm like, what are we going to do? Now if we...
There are other fresh and healthy foods.
Exactly. So, you know, if I can capitalize on peppers and cucumbers and carrots, which are not out of our, you know, I just was trying to be mindful of money, but yeah, we got double whammied.
Okay, any staffing, any staffing number issues, I shouldn't ask specific, you know, are staffing numbers good, holding solid?
Yes. So our, our staffing, we're, we're running pretty parallel with what our needs are. So you, in order to calculate what your staff needs are, you run a meals per labor hour and determine, okay, this is how many people we have and this is how many people we need. Our bigger issue is the fact that we don't really have a full staff of substitutes. So what ends up, oh, sorry. So what ends up happening is someone calls out sec and we only have two subs and then I have to prioritize, okay, so this person is experienced with this. I might have to take this person and ask them to help us out at this other school because they know how to run this. Those are the glitches with labor. We could use more substitutes, for sure.
Substitutes are a huge issue. I just want to say I'm going to really miss you.
Well, thank you.
Thank you for your time here.
I will miss you too.
So I think you did a great job. Thank you very, very much. I thought that was a great presentation too. So I just have three things I want to talk about.
Okay.
So what, what can this board or what can individuals in this community do to get a salad bar at the high school? And I don't know if it's such a bad idea that if a child went up and they took what they wanted, no different than if they were to go into a grocery store or any other business, they pay what they put on the plate. So to, to your point, I, I agree with you. I, I have a restaurant also that understands.
I'm aware.
Price of salad, so I agree with you. Why wouldn't, how can we get salad bars and at least start it at the high school and allow these kids to have that kind of an option? What can we do to support the system?
Well, that's part of my whole long-term game plan is that, one, we need the equipment to do that. So we have to purchase a salad bar. Two, we need labor to support it because in a school environment with, you know, just issues about sanitization and having our staff, our staff would have to mean it. Because you can have a salad bar, but you have to follow very, a very strict protocol. Within schools, that's maybe a little bit more strict than it is out there, only because potential contaminants. Think about it, if something were to happen in our salad bar, we could potentially contaminate 200 kids in a line before we even are hip to the fact that there is an issue. So it, it, you have to have the labor to support it and you have to have the piece of equipment. And that's why, you know, we have to look at long-term capital plans because we could absolutely do a salad bar. I encourage that. I love that idea. And you're absolutely right. A customer can go through and say, as long as they're reaching their requirements, if they have, you know, you know, it's a half cup requirement, if they have a cup of lettuce with whatever they want to put on it, as long as they're meeting that, you're absolutely right.
So let me ask you a question, Danielle. Why couldn't that be an à la carte item? They go through their line, they get their regular lunch, it comes with a salad, it comes with all the requirements. However, if there's a child that wants to go through the salad bar line in addition and pay for whatever they put on their plate, two things would happen. A, I think we could really provide the children of what they're asking for because that's what I hear a lot. Salad bar, salad bar, salad bar. Also, I think as far as if the child is paying and they're willing to pay, because that's their option, right, à la carte. They don't have to, they can go through the lunch line, get their required requirements, their nutritional requirements through the lunch line. But wouldn't that help offset, because your increasing sales helps that, offset labor costs?
Yes, yes, of cour, yes.
So it sounds like that we could maybe, if we overcame this cost of the piece of equipment, is that something that we could probably start for next year? Therefore, all we would have to do is fund a salad bar, which I have a little bit of experience with the cost of that also, so we could probably put a campaign together for that. Is that all we would have to do?
It's a little bit more complicated when you're talking about the regulatory piece because here's the, here's the other layer of that. So a child that goes through the line, we're currently only in one tiered system as far as our pricing goes. So, okay, so your lunch is automatically $3.10. So trying to, you know, have this expansive salad bar and still have our costs controlled with the only option of 310, that's challenging to do.
Why would you have to, I'm going to challenge.
You don't have to. You don't have to. You can tier it. You can offer a tiered system lunch, which we just didn't move forward with last year. It is a possibility and you absolutely can do it. And you're absolutely right. Okay, here's your standard and then à la carte. À la carte gets tricky though because there's federal regulation that comes into play that anything sold à la carte, if you were to take your salad as you were going through the salad bar, let's say you have your cup of lettuce and all your toppings, but you wanted to add a chicken breast onto yours. Okay? Anything that's over 200 calories cannot be sold à la carte. So that salad can't be à la carte because it falls under the Smart Snacks regulation and it's, it's actually out of, we'd be out of compliance in doing that.
Why couldn't you portion, control the, the protein on that, on that chicken? So they can't put, like, everybody knows what happens when they go through a salad bar or any kind of a buffet, right? A little plate stops and ends up like this. However, if they're able to go through an à la carte line and some of the requirements that are issues are portion-controlled.
Right.
Now they can't, now we can't get in trouble with that.
Well, so here's the thing. You can make it a standard lunch on a tiered system where you would charge maybe a little bit more for that because it is going to be a little bit more costly to manage staff-wise and to, your food cost is going to be higher. Okay, here's the thing. It can't be sold as an à la carte. It would have to be a meal and any additional things à la carte. Does that make sense to you? Because inevitably, even if you keep your chicken breast to four ounces or your beans because they carry a bigger punch with your calories, with the salad, you'd still be exceeding, now mind you, you have to have a grain component, when you add all those together, you're over 200 calories. So even a miniscule salad is out of compliance as far as Smart Snacks, Smart Snacks regs go. See what I'm saying? That you, you'd have to create a tiered system of a reimbursable meal and do those additions on the side.
Only if you go after reimbursable?
No, because the Smart, anything you sell à la carte in a kitchen falls under Smart Snacks regulations. If you look on the website that, that I have on there, there's a Smart Snacks calculator and it plugs in and it walks you through a series of questions. And it's great for fundraisers and things, but it also offers clarity here. You know, is this thing contributing, you know, your dairy, your whatever? But inevitably, when you get to the point where it exceeds 200 calories, you're, you're, you're out of compliance. It's just more challenging. I love the idea, but we would have to establish a two-tiered system for cost.
Why couldn't they just pay for what is on the plate, taking the calories out of consideration? Because let's say it's all vegetables. So, so say the calories wasn't an issue, an obstacle, right? Why couldn't they just pay like the way you put it on a scale and they paid X amount per pound or X amount per ounce?
Because under the National School Lunch Program, the regulation states that it can only be one of two things. It's either a meal or it's an à la carte. And if it's an à la carte, it has to fall under these rules. And if it's a meal, it has to fall under these rules. So inevitably, I'm kind of stuck in that because any meal has to have five components offered. So you'd have your protein, so you'd have your meat, oh, sorry, meat or meat alternative, bean, whatever. You'd have your, your subgroups for vegetables and you have to offer, you know, the variety of shades, milk, grain, and I don't know what I'm forgetting, fruit and vegetable, two different things. So I have to offer all five. They have to take three for it to be a meal or it has to be an à la carte and there's no in-between.
So if it's à la carte, it has to be from the 200 calories?
Right. Which is crazy. You're absolutely right. How the system should work is you should be able to get a salad with whatever you want on it and you're absolutely right and go through. But either way, we have to either establish it this way and develop a tiered system or this way and do it à la carte and keep it under 200 calories. But with those five components, I can't figure out how to do it.
Okay. So, so when it comes to the dressings, because all the calories are in the dressing-
Mm-hmm.
So when it comes to the dressings, how do you, would the child be allowed to, be required to, to, to take dressings? What happens if there were other substitutes other than packaged dressings?
Oh, no. You can, we can, you can dress a salad, that's fine.
Okay.
And obviously, you're going to save a ton of calories and a ton of fat and all kinds of other things. And we do that typically when we serve salads in the line or we have to portion them because we have to be able to prove, we have to, we have to pull in, anything that is served as a condiment, whether it's a ketchup or a barbecue sauce or whatever, it has to be included in the tally of the meal. And it's crazy because the sodium element becomes an even larger issue because the amount of dressing we're able to serve is like, you know, a half an ounce. Because when you include the sodium into it, it's-
Well, it's crazy. I mean, it's crazy because if you were to get a slice of pizza-
Right.
I have to give them, I, I used to, we don't service the Chumsid schools because I'm on the board, but either one and a half ounces for the elementary schools, two ounces for the adults, adults, the junior and high school kids-
Right.
-of cheese per slice-
Right.
-which people don't have, can't even imagine with two ounces of cheese.
Right.
Looks like people don't realize how much it is.
Right, right. Well, that's all part of the regulation. So none of this was a factor until the Healthy Hunger-Free Kids Act of 2010. The first element that came to play was calories. So now we have minimums and maximums. So it used to be, okay, you've reached these five components and you've served a wholesome meal and there was no limitation on calories. That all came to play, so I can't exceed the maximums and I can't not offer enough to meet the minimums. So it's complicated. It is. It's very complicated.
So just, is there any other school systems in the state of Massachusetts that offer a salad bar?
They offer a salad bar per se, but like I said, it's a tiered system where they, exactly as you suggest, that's exactly how they handle it. They have a salad bar. It's all vegetables, period. On top of the salad bar, you'll have your bread grain offering. So you might have a roll and a Syrian bread or whatever. Whatever you're offering for grains could be, you know, bulgar wheat, whatever, doesn't matter for your grains. Then at the beginning, you have your protein station where the items are pre-portioned into meeting the meat equivalents for whatever that grade group is. Like you said, at the high school, it's two ounces. At the, you know, elementary school, it's less. And you, you can select, you know, you could select beans or meat or whatever it is that your choice is. And then you kind of build the salad.
Right.
Yes, you can do that.
Who's, Ms. Chairman, I don't want to, I know there's some other points, so I'd like to come back to that. Maybe it would be okay if I contacted you and maybe we could even go to some other schools or-
Sure.
-talk to some other directors. I think that has to come into our school system in some form or fashion and it's not no because, it's yes if, right? Yes, if we do this. How do we get this great news out that is in this package? How do I get that to the, to the parents of Chumsid? How are you pushing that out?
So one of the things that I think is, is a major factor that has been overlooked in time past, times past is marketing. One of the reasons why I rolled out that tool is simply because I want to have that contact with parents. Parents need to feel comfortable with what's going on in the program. We need to be transparent and there needs to be that back and forth. Another factor is, is that when I've had openings in my schools, I've hired members of the PTO. Because guess what? They're involved in the community and they know what's going on and we're trying to, you know, just get the good word out. So that's part of it. I think coming here is helpful.
Do you feel like it's getting out, Danielle?
I think it's partially getting out and there's more opportunity.
And would you have some better ideas for us to help you get that information out? Maybe you could think about it a little bit more and-
Sure.
So maybe you can come back to us or just send us a fast email?
Sure.
Okay. Last one, and I apologize, committee. I'm going to bore this very respectfully. How's our relationship with the town of Chumsid as far as the health inspector coming to our schools? Do we have a good working relationship? Is there challenging times with our health inspector? Because I know in the past, that was a real problem and, you know, I, I was passionate about that with the town manager. How is it now?
I, I think it's excellent now. I came in and I introduced myself to Mark right away. Mark was very receptive about everything that we were, you know, facing. They, you know, Mark had some legitimate issues about things that we needed to address and we've addressed all of them very, very timely. That, that's why I was mentioning the, the things about the faucet upgrades and the, you know, the paneling on the walls and those sorts of things. Because as things arise, we need to address them. And I think that we've, we've had a wonderful working relationship, honestly, it's a pleasure.
So you feel the, the relationship is 180?
Yes, absolutely.
Good, excellent. Thank you. I apologize.
I have one quick question.
Sure.
Do any schools sell food at the end of the day?
After school.
Yeah.
So according to the regulation, yes, you can sell food. However, the definition of the school day is midnight the night before to 30 minutes post-final bell. Do schools sell things during that time period? Absolutely. That we have boosters and we have all kinds of things happening all over the town. Some things are not bound by that regulation and others are. Sports organizations are not bound by that regulation. When this all came to be and it came to DC, there were a lot of folks that spoke up from a coaching level. So the concessions that we have at our football games, they don't come into play. However, if the math league, which is considered academic, is hosting a meeting at, you know, 4 o'clock, they're outside of the regulations. If they're hosting that meeting within that 30-minute time period, they have to fall within this regulation.
Well, the reason I ask, I mean, we put all this attention into the day and the end of the day, the kids are starving, they go to Burger King.
Right.
Which is bad on couple, a couple levels. One, food. And the other, we don't want them riding around, you know, hurrying to get back to practice.
Excellent point.
I, I completely agree with you.
So anything-
Yeah, yeah.
It just, anything we could do to, to offer something that's better than running out of the school to somewhere else?
Well, I'm, I'm limited as to the contract of my staff, so I don't really have staff during that time period. I would love to see a student organization that wants to sell healthy snacks that could be provided by the school nutrition program for them to sell and make some money for their own programming after that 30-minute time period.
Yeah. Maybe the people from DECA particularly need to talk to you because that was, you know, they have to raise big, big bucks because they go to international conferences. And that way, they used to sell pizza.
Well, and the other part of that conversation is that we now have a fundraising policy in place, which, you know, I was involved in when we were writing it. And I reached out to all of these different organizations and said, listen, I'd love to come and help. I, I'd be happy to offer a million suggestions to, so that you can do fundraising and yet we're compliant. And it's healthy for the kids. You're absolutely right.
That's good to know. Thank you.
I wonder if you can get a food truck?
I would love to.
You know? Food truck after school.
That would be, that would be amazing.
Have to follow certain criteria.
Well, here, here's the thing, too. There's a serious need during that timeframe and it's really challenging to find the labor for. As a perfect, for instance, in my, in my former life, we had a building and I had to close one of the cafeterias and expand off another one. So the school committee decided they didn't want to have this satellite building without food options available to students. I enroll, I brought in smart vending. What smart vending is, is that it's, it's a vending machine. They can use their lunch money in the vending machine to get a reimbursable meal, to get a yogurt parfait, to get a piece of fruit, to get, you know, a milk, whatever. And it went right down the line so that students could select whatever they wanted. Now, that was an option meant for that child on crutches, that they didn't want them walking through an open campus to try to get to the building with the cafeteria. Now, that being said, we sold two meals during the lunch period. After school, where they could use their lunch money that mom and dad were paying for, the machine would be empty by like quarter past 3:00 because every student athlete would go to that machine, capitalize on getting their lunch money, that their parents were, that the parents are thrilled because they're eating healthy foods instead of, you know, McDonald's and-
Why aren't we doing that again?
Well, we don't, we just don't have a smart vending machine. Capital.
Pull your mic.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Yeah, I'm getting some requests. People at home can't hear you.
Sorry.
Are you telling me that we can't get a vendor to, to stock and sell their product in those machines, but part of it, they have to put the machine up?
We can do that. That is an option available to us. It's a little bit more complicated. The vending machine companies typically want to sell granola bars and potato chips and we currently have that option and that's really not what, that would fulfill that after-school need. You have to get a company that's willing to do that. It can be very costly. They often ask for money upfront. It depends upon what we want to explore as an option. I bought the machine in my former life on purpose because I wanted to-
What did the machine cost?
It was a lot of money. It was like 38 grand. It was a lot of money. Because it, because it's a point of service also.
Right.
But it's good forever. So I don't know, it depends. Sorry.
Any idea of the impact? There's a rollback, maybe, or relaxing of the-
So there's actually some good news to report in that front. Yes, so actually-
I don't think it's good news, but-
Well, no. I think that this segment is good news.
Okay.
We're currently at a sodium level one. The proposal was that we switch to a sodium level two by July 1, which was ridiculous. I mean, it was absolutely so low, a high blood pressure patient would be consuming more sodium than what we'd be able to provide our kids and I'm not exaggerating. So you literally have to soak all your beans because you can't use canned beans because just the simple act of using a can means they've added sodium. They've allowed us to continue where we are at the level one sodium rates until 2020, until the conversation happens again. That's good news. That's good news for me and for a lot of directors because that would have been very, very challenging. The discussion in DC is about block granting, our programs. Block granting is not a good thing for our programs, especially here. Reason being, they would entitle you to X amount of dollars for the entire state and the higher need places would take that funding immediately and we would, we would pretty much be thrown out of the pool. So that's, that's not ideal and it wouldn't, it wouldn't feed our purposes. The free and reduced rates here are minuscule in comparison to other places. So that, that wouldn't be in our best interest. That's on hold. The sodium is in place. There's only discussion on the table about block grants at this point. I don't think that's going to move forward, to be honest.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
A lot of information.
Awesome.
Thank you, Danielle.
Thank you. If you have questions later, feel free to email me.
Yep. Not trying to, not trying to bully with this. So at the end of the presentation, there were two different pieces of paper. The first one was regarding the price level. So we're just going to confirm that we're not making any adjustments in the school lunch prices recommended for next year. I, I think we should probably just vote that because it is technically establishing the policy for school lunches. So if we could have a recommendation to maintain the existing 2016, 17 school lunch program, price levels in 2017, 18. And for the viewing audience at home, at the elementary level, that's 265. Middle and high school, it's 3.10. And then breakfast will remain at a dollar and a half. If we could have a motion to that effect, that would be great.
Okay. Ms. Chairman, I make a motion that we maintain pricing for the calendar year 2017, 2018. Would you like me to tell you the prices? Okay, so the prices that were existing today, that's my motion.
Second.
All in favor? Aye. Aye. Any negative voter or abstention? Not unanimous.
Okay, and then the second sheet of the handout was, these were the tech awards, the tech bid awards that were in there. So we can take this as one cumulative motion, but it would basically be a motion to approve of the awarding of the, the tech, T E C, bid amounts. And I can just list those for you. Groceries went to Costa Foods in the amount of $80,286.54. Also, Thirst and Foods in the amount of $97,090.53. The Dairy Award went to New England Ice Cream for eighty-two thousand, four hundred and forty-nine dollars and fifty cents. The Bread was awarded to Fiantini at an estimated amount of six thousand, nine hundred and eighty-eight dollars and sixty-nine cents. The Paper Award went to Mansfield Paper in the amount of twenty-one thousand, three hundred and forty-five dollars and forty-three cents. Water for the vending machines was going to be awarded to Polar in the amount of six thousand, five hundred and sixty-four dollars and sixty-nine cents. Also, Fresh Pizza was going to Gil's Pizza in the amount of twenty thousand, one hundred and seventy-four dollars. So, you do not need to list all of those back in the motion, but just a motion to award the tech bids as presented would be appreciated.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we accept the tech bid awards for 2017-2018 as shown.
Second.
Motion made in second. Any, any questions or discussion?
Yeah, do we have any comparison to the numbers for last year's budget on these?
Yeah, some of them are higher, some of them are lower. Because we, when we go to bid, it's by line item through the tech collaborative. So, Costa actually won a bigger piece of the business only because they won certain line items. It's a little bit more complicated this year because we have NOI, which means net-off invoice. There's a deduction that's taken directly from the invoice. However, you have to stick with the same, in other words, you have to bid only Tyson for your chicken and only for one vendor. So, it's slightly skewed more towards Costa on the grocery line item. It's, the whole page encompassed is slightly higher, but not slightly higher in comparison to the growth that we're expecting.
Okay, and is there any, are any of these numbers, do they just, you just went, oh my gosh, you know, are they close to last year's?
Yeah, they're actually better. Capitalizing on NOI actually is, is very beneficial because we're double dipping. So, in other words, we're diverting product through a company, and we're saying, okay, we're only doing Tyson products. But when we receive those invoices, it will say, you know, Tyson, you ordered a case of whole breast chicken, minus fourteen dollars right off the bat. It, it's, it's a program that was just launched here in Massachusetts. I was a part of the panel because I, I have experience with it. It means we capitalize on greater, greater reduction to our costs.
Thank you.
How was your diversions, Mr. Chairman? Did you increase your diversions?
Our diversion, meaning moving forward to next year?
Yes.
I don't know what my total level is. No, it, it was higher, it was slightly higher for this coming year. We won't know what ne- it's all based on your October numbers. So, what we report in October, that's the basis for everything. We had a slight dip, remember, because we encompassed the price increase in our participation level, so it could be slightly less. But once again, if you manage your monies well, and you show them, hey, listen, we're capitalizing on every single penny, and you go after those additional figures, that DOD money will be available next year because we'll be in year one of a three-year bid for produce.
That'll be a big deal.
Yes, it is. It's a very big deal.
Thank you.
Yep.
Any further questions? Okay, this will be a roll call vote. Dennis? Aye. Aye.
Aye.
Unanimous.
Great. Thank you very much, Danielle, for sharing that information tonight. Moving on, next item on the agenda this evening is update and approval of the fiscal eighteen budget that we're going to be going into in July. So, there's the full documents before you, but I want to just walk you through a few things that have been realigned. Actually, then refer you to page nineteen of the budget book because page nineteen is the summative page that actually lists all of our individual accounts by DUCI function code and then a dollar amount next to them. And these are the numbers that you're actually technically going to vote and approve on, and this is the budget that we have to live within. And if we need to make changes outside of those line items that you approve is when we have to come back to the school committee. So, a couple of things that we have changed in the documents since April of thirteen. This is just to reflect the three bullets listed in, that Joanna put together on the summary sheet. It was the kindergarten teacher position, this was at the last meeting, that was moved to a school psychologist position. They're on two different pages of the budget, so we needed to move those funds. We did add a new psychologist to the psychologist page and then showed the offset in the school choice funds. And then, third, if you recall, I believe it was two meetings ago, there was a special teacher position at Parker that was added, and it was offset from contracted services. So, those were on different pages of the budget book, so we've made those adjustments. The bottom line of the budget has not changed. It's just moving money within those pages and actually having you vote as we go into fiscal eighteen on what the actual dollar amounts in those line items are. Joanna and Leanne in the business office also went through the budget book based on the updated DUCI function codes and suggested moving some line items within the budget that might have been reflected on different pages so that our budget book will actually reflect what the, how we report our information to the state. So, no numbers have changed. It just might be moving a line item from, you know, page ten to page twelve. But the line item and the history has all gone forward, so that is laid out in the memo as well. Happy to answer any questions. What I did is, obviously, we incorporated this into the budget document, and if you flip to page nineteen of the budget document, that is your summary level total for the fifty-seven million dollar school department budget. So, after discussion, I would request a vote to approve the fiscal eighteen summary level budget detail. And again, this is what we'll report on throughout the next fiscal year to the school committee.
Do you want a motion before discussion, or you want to just open it for discussion?
I'd like to have a motion if we can do that.
So, Mr. Superintendent, I'd like to just make sure I'm making the right motion. Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to approve fiscal year budget eighteen summary level in detail.
Summary level detail. As outlined on page nineteen.
And thank you very much. As outlined on page nineteen.
A second?
Second, sorry.
Need discussion?
Yeah, I have a question. The email we received this week from Mr. Cohen about the Special Education Reserve Fund money, it was just a port, some, all or some of that money need, he said, needs to be put into Special Education Reserve Fund.
Yes.
He recommended the committee have a discussion about it and consider doing that.
Yes.
We haven't actually voted. This is all part of the new, I forget the name a lot, but the new Modernization Act that the school committee now has another resource at its hand to be able to do that. Right now, the school committee is limited with regard to what type of funds when they come into the district, where they can be accounted for. There are certain revolving funds that the state allows school committees and towns to establish, and there hadn't been one previously for this type of activity. So, on a positive note, you know, we have that flexibility now where we could bring a recommendation before the school committee and then also the Board of Selectmen to establish this fund. It would be similar to a revolving fund.
Right.
The only catch, and I don't foresee this being a major problem, but the only catch is, once you put money into the fund, the only way to take funding or money out is by action again of the school committee. So, the school committee and the Board of Selectmen would need to vote to move money out. I think this bill, if I had to speculate, and the new Modernization Act came along, because some school committees were in a position where the only flexibility we have with regard to special education funding at this point in time is basically the Circuit Breaker Fund so that we can maintain up to a full year's carryover in Circuit Breaker. So, for us, it's a little under two and a half million dollars that we can maintain in that fund. Off the top of my head, I think at year-end last year, we tried to move a little bit of money into the fund, decided to build a little bit of a reserve. We might have had about a seven-hundred-thousand-dollar balance in that account. Obviously, we have some leeway before we get to the two and a half million, which we're able to expand. Some communities are in a predicament where they're already kind of maxed out their Circuit Breaker Fund, so technically, at the end of the year, you're not allowed to carry over more than one year's allocation. Any funds that remain divert back to the town's general fund, and then would have to be subject to further appropriation to ever come back to the school committee if that were going to happen. So, some communities that had maxed out their Circuit Breaker Fund, I think, probably petitioned to have an outside fund set up. So, it's certainly something, you know, I did read Paul's email also, I want to look into a little bit further. You would need to first set to vote to establish the fund, but we would have-
We would vote that, or town meeting would vote that?
The school committee and the Board of Selectmen.
And the, okay.
Yeah, just to set it up as a revolving fund. And again, we just have to figure out, it's, we're not quite in the predicament where we have to rush and do that right now.
Right.
Because we haven't maxed out a Circuit Breaker Reserve Fund.
Okay.
And again, the luxury of the Circuit Breaker Fund is that it only requires an action of the school committee. You don't have to then go to the Board of Selectmen for a vote to move money out of that fund.
Yeah.
So, it's just a little bit more control within the school committee if, if there's funds remaining there.
Got it.
But I will look into this over the summer. This is a relatively new development. The money that was reported from Valley returned. We still not going to know to the penny until after June thirtieth because the fiscal year has to close, and they have to certify what type of funding is coming to us. We then are going to be left with a decision sometime in the fall of, do we accept, say, a check from Valley? And, you know, where are we going to account for that, or what fund would we put it in? Certainly, that fund that Paul suggested would be an option. Another option would be to basically leave the amount on credit with Valley and just apply invoices over the course of the school year to that credit. But we don't have to act now. We're not going to know the, the final number from Valley until probably sometime midsummer.
Okay.
And for our budget planning purposes, we did earmark a piece of that fund.
Right. That's why it's, and some of that piece is, is contained in this budget update.
Correct. Yep, no, it's incorporated into the last page. We have the offset to that fund. So, we have technically earmarked a piece to that, and I'll come up with a strategy and then make a recommendation to you probably early fall when we know a little bit more about what the bottom-line number is and also what the, what available avenues are to account for the fund.
Okay, thank you.
Just, just two points, Jay. First of all, four-fifteen change, it feels like the number, right? Four-fifty-seven, what was that number that we gave in Valley? If I recall, four-fifty, am I close?
It's mid, mid-fours.
Yeah, four-fifty-seven, I think, or something like that. Jay, in ten seconds, can you just tell the people that are listening exactly what took place? Because we're talking about something, and I guarantee you, people are not aware of what, what happened with the Valley.
Four-sixty-seven, three-fifty-nine. Very good, very good.
In layman's terms, for people watching at home. Valley, basically, over the last number of years, has been operating very efficiently. They've totally turned around the program. Their programming itself is excellent. Their costs are very reasonable. They're probably lower than several other collaboratives in the area. And they have generated profit, if you look at it that way. So, the state statute only allows Valley, because they're a public entity, to have so much profit on their books at the end of the year. And Valley is in a situation where they're just, they're running lean, and because of member districts, and also they take in students from districts that aren't member districts, they're generating excess profit. So, the way it works is Chelmsford is a member district of Valley. There's seven or eight of us districts that are technically owners, if you want to look at it that way, of Valley. And they can only have X number of dollars on, on the books as of the end of the fiscal year, June thirtieth. Anything over that amount has to be returned to the member districts. So, it's excess profit that's basically coming back to the member districts, and they allocate it based on the percentage of how much stake in the collaborative we have, based on how much tuition Chelmsford has paid to Valley for the year, how much Drake it has paid, Tinsborough has paid. And as a percentage, they've calculated that approximately two million dollars is being sent back to all the member districts. And of that two million dollars, Chelmsford's percent of what we've actually done in business with them for the year is the four-hundred-and-fifty-some-odd-thousand dollars, four-sixty, whatever the number is, ends up being, is going to come back to us. Because they can't keep that money in their books, they have too much, too much profit, basically, if that helps.
It does. I just, you know, I got some emails on that, you know, people are not really understanding it. That was a great clarification, number one, and number two, it's good news, and number three, I think we got the most.
We did. We actually have the most, of the member districts, we have the most number of students that are participating there now, and so we're, we're actually, of the member districts paying the most tuition. But the program is serving us very well. Again, as a, you know, when we're putting the budget together, we can't rely on this money from year to year. It's really technically one-time money because we don't know how they're going to operate. I assume they're going to operate as efficiently next year, and we'll probably be looking at a return as well, but you can't really go bank on that. So, we're going to treat it as a one-time revenue. We took a little bit of that money as an offset so that we didn't have to further reduce our operating budget for the year, but we still have a little bit of a set aside. And hopefully, you know, a year from now, we'll receive more money back from Valley, and we'll be having this conversation. But it basically turns down to excess profit that they can't keep, and it has to come back to the member districts.
And I think what Paul said, I think we should give a lot of consideration to. Whenever we've needed something, the town manager supported us. I think his idea was an excellent idea, and I'd like us to continue to think that way.
Yeah, and again, I'm not, it's not that I'm opposed to it. This is relatively new, and I've just got to figure out the mechanism and how to make it all work and make sure that both bodies, if we're going to do this, actually take the necessary votes procedurally to make sure the fund is established properly, make sure that we know on the town accounting side, you know, they have the ability to invest the funds, but then any earnings is supposed to come back to the fund itself. We'd have to figure out how to actually account for that and make sure that if that happened, we saw the return on funds. May, I want to also read the statute and make sure that there's no limitations on how many years you can roll over funding within it so that if we put money in fiscal eighteen and we don't need it, you know, I want to make sure we can still access that money in fiscal nineteen or fiscal twenty if something were to come up. And where it's new, I just need to do a little bit of time on it. But we're not looking at taking in any revenue until sometime in the fall, anyway, so we have, we have time to do that.
And I just want to commend you, Dr. Lang, on the level of transparency. You got that information right out. I really appreciate it, and great job. Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you.
I'm sure the town appreciates it, too.
We still have a motion standing, right?
Yeah.
Yes.
Okay. Could you repeat it because it has, just because there's been a time lapse here.
Do you have it?
Yeah. Okay.
I make a motion to approve fiscal year eighteen summary level in detail as outlined on page nineteen.
Second.
That's fine.
Second.
Okay, this will be a roll, roll call vote. Dennis?
Aye.
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 Okay, unanimous.
Great, thank you. Next report of the evening is an update regarding coordination of nursing services for next year in the district. As I indicate in the memo, I very much want to thank Kathy Rosman, who's been the coordinator for school nursing for a number of years. Kathy had come to us over the course of this past year and indicated that she was going to remain on as a school nurse, but she was going to step down from her department head role. We advertised among the existing nurses in the district for, to see if there was any interest in someone stepping up to be the department head of nursing, and unfortunately, we didn't receive any applications from people who were interested in, in being considered for that job. Subsequently, over the course of the last week, we actually received a resignation from one of our long-term nurses at one of our schools, who's going to be leaving the district in the fall or the summer to take a, kind of a supervisory role in, in another district in the area. So, while you're happy that the person's, you know, getting kind of a promotion and moving on, obviously, you don't like to see disruption in staffing, so that's, that's of concern to us. I am concerned, and I expressed in the memo, we obviously have certain things that we need to get in line for next year as far as, we need to have some type of a supervisory administrative nurse in the district. I would have liked to have fulfilled the department head position, but if no one is interested, it kind of leaves us with, with, need to come up with another plan. So, as I proposed in the memo and then attached for you, I think it's time that we actually look at restructuring the position itself. There's been a lot of talk about nursing and nursing services and needing additional services in the district. What I'm proposing to do is actually change the, because we're going to be hiring now an outside RN. There'll be a new RN joining the district, but take the funding from the position that the person is vacating and basically change the position to be a coordinator for school nursing. Have it go from kind of a school-level, a school-year position to being a year-round position. Add additional supervisory duties and evaluative duties to it, and hopefully attract someone to that job. Certainly, people that work for us now, if they're interested, can apply and be an applicant and be considered, and I think having the knowledge of the district would be great. They might be a great fit for the job. But if someone in the district is just not willing to apply or step up for that, we have to be able to set ourselves up for the fall and be able to take care of all the administrative nursing functions that we have to as far as sign-offs and paperwork and things along those lines. So, I, I sent you that memo in the packet, and then I prepared a, a job description for coordinator of school nursing services, and I would ask your permission this evening to approve of this new position and allow me to begin the advertisement process to, to see candidates who might be interested in serving in this role.
Before I make a motion, Mr. Chairman, I just, once again, want to, nobody applied for this job? The prior job?
Well, the department head for school nursing. No, correct. We advertised and no one applied.
What are the consequences of not having somebody in that position?
Well, there's no consequences specifically of not having someone in that position, but as a district, we need to have some type of an administrative supervisory nurse because someone in the district has to, well, this is actually come up, and I've talked about it, but like, someone in the district has to sign off on, say, the medical, medication delegation forms. Sign off and provide training to our existing nurses and staff about policies and procedures and help with hiring of nurses and, because that really doesn't, you know, that's not our purview as far as, like, my expertise is not hiring a nurse. So, we oftentimes kind of delegate that to this person who would be overseeing nursing in the district. So, we need to have some type of an administrative supervisory nurse, and I think it is time, particularly again, given the amount of attention and focus that we've kind of talked about as far as nursing is concerned this year. The need is certainly there, and I'm hoping this is a way to attract someone to the position. Again, internally, I'm open to people if they're interested, and if no one is interested, though, we know minimally we're going to be hiring a nurse from the outside. Maybe an outside person would be considered or be interested in being considered for, for such a job. But we're trying to be mindful of the fact that this is, it's stressful, it's, it's a lot of work. We're expanding the work year so that we're providing the person time to be able to do that.
A common type of position in other districts?
Yeah, they take on a different role. I mean, the title varies from district to district, but I mean, typically, every district has some type of an overarching nurse, whether it be called a nurse leader or a coordinator or a, you know, department head. Every district typically has some type of a, like a head nurse in the district. And, you know, this is the recommendation I come up with, just, you know, again, given the fact that we have to do something and to make this job a little more appealing and enticing to, to people, and I'm hoping that this will provide us that, that ability.
Do you want a motion first, or do you want to keep going with questions?
I'd like a motion.
Simple as this, Dr. Lang. Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we create a new position called the Coordinator of School Nursing Services.
And authorize the advertising of such a position.
And authorize the advertising of such a position, sir.
For a second to that motion?
Second.
Any further discussion or questions?
So, this person would now be a coordinator and would be in the bargaining unit with the admin?
Well, we don't know that for sure. So, this, the, you're technically approving like a non-affiliated position. So, this isn't associated with any particular bargaining group right now because it's not recognized by any group. now because it's not recognized by any group. If approved, then any of our existing unions may petition to have this position be allowed into the union or be recognized by their union. This position certainly is more in line with the administrative union than the teaching union because of the work year and the fact that this person would be doing, say, evaluation of other nurses, things like that, that don't typically happen within the teachers' union.
And why, why is it that none of our existing, a couple of questions. Why do none of our existing staff want to take this position? And two, we're going to, it appears that we're going to be giving additional responsibilities for the same salary budgeted and there will also be a school, a nurse in that school. So that's a lot on the plate with, you know, no enticement.
Right. Couple of things. On the, I can't speak to why people don't apply for different jobs. I can speculate that the department head position was basically a stipend that was added on to a position.
Okay.
Perhaps the stipend for the amount of work or the amount of coordination or the responsibilities just wasn't at the level that the, that the nurses felt it should be at. That I really can't speak to. But I also can't go and just change a stipend that's agreed to in the contract. We're, you know, we're in negotiations on something like that. I, I lost you on the, what was the second part of your question?
Oh, the, first one was the bargaining unit, the second was?
Salary.
Salary.
Yeah, so what we're going to have, the salary is obviously going to be more there.
The stipend going to roll into and are we changing a position, you know what I mean? There, right now, the current position is located in a bargaining unit. Are, we're taking it out?
The department coordinator, stipended position, is included in the bargaining unit. So we're creating a new position, coordinator for the school nursing services, which is a different position, has a different work year, different responsibilities. And again, I would anticipate one of the unions, perhaps the administrative, I mean, perhaps the teachers would want this to be in the union. I don't know. We would have to have that dialogue. We need to figure out where this fits best within the organization. But this particular position will have a longer work year. What we will do is actually figure out, for argument's sake, let's say the administrators group did approach us and they wanted this in their union, then they already kind of have a prescribed work year. They have a prescribed salary schedule. So we'll have to see where this would fall within their group. I anticipate this is obviously going to cost more than just a regular nurse, but I'll have to come back to you with the funding for that. But I have spoken with, you know, Amy Reese and special education and whatnot and-
And Amy oversees?
Amy oversees technically the nursing services and Amy would oversee this coordinator.
She would, okay.
Yeah. And so we may need to actually allocate, even in this first year, some money from one of our grants to be able to offset the differential between the salary and the, the budgeted salary and the differential for this position.
Okay, I guess my question is, can we remove this position from whatever unit they're in now without negotiating that?
You're not removing this position. This position doesn't exist.
Oh, okay.
The position of department head and a stipend exists. We advertised for the position and no one applied.
Right.
So that position still exists. It's still there in the union. This is a totally different position going in a totally different direction and that's what we're, we're approving.
But the prior position, I mean, we're, we're going to put them in the school where that position is. Are we, do you know what I'm saying?
Yeah, when, yes, but I, I understand what you're saying.
Okay.
But we're not, we're not eliminating the other position. The department head for nursing, for math, for science, whatever, is still going to remain. It's still in the contract. We're not filling that stipended role largely because no one applied for it.
Right.
And we're moving in a different direction at this point in time.
Okay. So you're not saying that Parker's going to have two nurses?
Well, they have an RN and they have an healthy RN.
Yes, yes. We're-
I'm not adding a nurse.
Okay.
So this will be a school-based position, but it will take on additional responsibilities.
Got it.
Would you be moving in this direction if somebody applied for the job?
I don't know, quite honestly. I mean, the easiest thing, if someone had applied and someone was interested and they were a good fit for the job, I don't know that I would necessarily be bringing this forward at this point in time. I think if we hired someone under the old title, we'd still be dealing with some of the same issues that we have as far as, it is an incredibly demanding job. For the stipend that's allotted, it may not be that attractive to someone. And I, I do feel, and I've heard, and I've tried to take this into consideration, the fact that the work year itself is difficult, right? That we need to have some additional hours, some additional days. And I think this is the way to do that. I've also, you know, again, just anecdotally had conversations throughout the year on, you know, what are some of the things that are missing. I don't think under the current setup that the nurses necessarily have someone who's supervising them, someone who's evaluating them who's a nurse. And I think this position may actually help with that. This position might allow them that kind of nurse leading type person who can serve that supervisor, be got a valuable role also, that we just simply can't, I just don't have that skill set. I, I can't provide that, that level of support.
To answer Sal's question, we have several nurses in the audience. Can one of them talk to us? Is that okay?
It's, well, it's, it's not really an open thing at this point.
Okay. Any, any further questions or discussion? All right. All in favor of the motion? Say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed or abstaining? Abstention? Okay, one abstention.
The last, last item I have on the agenda this evening for the regular session is the, and this is a year from now, but the Chelmsford High School, I'm sorry, the Chelmsford All-Town Wind Ensemble is requesting permission to go to Carnegie Hall in New York a year from now, March 29th through April 1st. I support this trip, obviously, and I would like to recommend the school committee support this as well so that they can make their plans and arrangements.
I make, I make a motion, Mr. Chairman, to allow the All-Town Wind Ensemble National Band and Orchestra Festival Carnegie Hall dates March 29th, 2018, April 1st, 2018.
Second.
Motion made in second. Any questions for discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any abstention or negative vote? Are there any liaison reports that people would like to share at this time? Hearing none. Yeah.
Oh, just whenever you are done, that's the motion for executive session.
Okay. I sent an email out asking if we could get feedback on the Summer Institute and it would save us some money if we registered early for the fall conference. Is there anyone on the committee that is interested in the Summer Institute? I don't think so.
Interested, yes.
Yeah, from a distance, okay. Are you comfortable with committing one way or the other for the fall or?
I'm in for the fall.
You're going to go?
I'm in.
Bob, you?
I don't know if I can commit now, but thank you.
Okay.
You remind me of one.
Sal, are you interested in that?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Just if we're, if anything changes, you know, because this won't happen immediately probably, but I'd like to take care of it. Okay. I understand a motion to adjourn into executive session with the intent to adjourn from executive session and not to return to public session.
I made a motion to adjourn from executive session and not enter into public session.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? Okay.